So, we do not have minutes tonight, but we will have them next time. We'll have two sets of minutes next time, probably. So, our first case tonight is 1820 Porter Street. So whoever is here representing Porter Street, please just give us a brief introduction, knowing that we've all seen this.
Hold on. One second. I just wanted to be clear, there's three meetings going on tonight. The Conservation Commission is on the third floor, so if someone's here for the conservation... Sorry, I think there was someone that they...
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt, but...
That's all right. Good evening, everybody. So what we're trying to achieve is... My name is Olga Ban. I'm manager of Vermont Partners. Company owns the property. It's 1820 Porter Street. It's a two-family property that we're renovating. It's a complete renovation, and at the end we'll have two brand-new units for new families to come in. So what we're looking right now is to add a parking in the back for two units, two parking spots per unit. We're suspecting that each unit will have a family, and that's usually the case, having a two cars in a family. Watertown does not have a parking in the wintertime, and there is very limited or no street parking, and we'd like to bring the parking in the back of the property.
And the case...
Short, yes.
Do we have a staff report? I bet we do.
Yes. It's very loud. So this is 1820 Porter Street. They have a pre-existing, non-conforming driveway on the side of the house, and they would like, through a special permit binding, to extend that into the rear yard in order to allow access to the rear yard and accommodate, as was stated, up to four parking spaces in the rear yard. The criteria for if this is... should be permitted is such change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use structure or building to the neighborhood. And staff found that the removal of the additional... the extension of the driveway, which would create an approximately two-foot buffer, was not substantially more detrimental than the existing condition, although there was a loss of some of that open space and buffer along the side of the house. And then the design, once resubmitted for the rear, did not require further relief and was appropriate. So staff suggests that this is appropriate and recommends conditional approval. Thank you. It's a short staff report.
Just one clarification question.
Sure.
Having seen this site and walked around it, the retaining wall is there on the left at the moment. Is that assuming that this all goes the way you want it to? How did that get located, that retaining wall on the left?
On the left side?
Pardon me?
On the left side. It's a line on the... along the lot line.
It is, okay.
Yes. The land survey... the land survey was done, and all the... the property was stacked, so that was exactly on the lot line.
So any questions?
Yeah, I could. I live around the corner on Boylestone Street, so I was able to take some time and take a look. I'm totally in favor of paving the driveway further to prevent parking buildup on the front of the house, which is what happens. My main concern is that, as Gideon mentioned, there is open space being lost. It's minimal, but there is open space being lost. And when I looked at the configuration of parking in the rear, it seemed to look like everything was getting paved, which is unfortunate. So I would... I'm in favor of the driveway extension, but I would like to discuss the condition of requiring a certain amount of that to be pervious as opposed to impervious pavement. Whether or not we have the power to stipulate how many square feet, I can't really say. But I do have a concern about overpaving in the neighborhood, and if we could have a promise that we would meet, at the minimum, meet the open space requirements in the code, that would be perfect.
No, we'll do our best on that. And I understand that we are making the driveway longer and getting... adding that parking space. We'll have to be very much aware of that and cautious. I agree with you. Yes.
So I have a question for staff. The dimensional table is not filled out, so I'm not sure what the impervious limitations are and what the current and future state would be. Do you happen to know, Gideon?
I do. It's actually... Actually, I'm not going to quote it, because I'm just going to look it up, make sure I'm not getting it mixed with another... But what I was going to also say was that the impervious... impervious isn't the issue from open space along the corridor. This site, the T-family... two-family zone allows a substantial amount of it to be impervious. But what it... what this is, is a four-foot strip that is required to be landscaped, and open space, that's not the same as the base requirement. So I think Janet's comment to that is more about the loss of that two-foot requirement. So there's a strip of four feet that's required, that's landscaped and not even pervious, that you can drive on. And then there's the additional area, which is... I was going to say 15%, but my ordinance is falling apart, so I'm...
So in front of the property and on the right side, you know, as you walked it, all that area that is not the driveway or the parking spots, we're going to have a grass on it. So that will be all green space. It will be nothing else on it. And that way, we'll make sure that the families that are going to live together, they will have some green space and landscape around.
So to respond to the question, Gary, the max impervious coverage on the site would be 85%, and the max minimum open space is 15%. But it, you know, it's up to the board to decide if it's... You know, they recommend that the areas that are being landscaped, that there be a condition to... that that landscaping remain and that it doesn't continue to be more paved, or if there's a transition, or if you... as you were suggesting, suggesting pervious materials, like pervious pavers or a pervious driveway, is a requirement, if you want to go down that path.
Does that answer what you're looking for?
So my question was just about whether the project as proposed meets with the proposed increase in the driveway and the parking area, whether that meets the impervious requirements. What's the bottom line? Does it?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I certainly agree with Polly's comment, it's a shame to turn your backyard into a parking lot. Most people wouldn't really appreciate that. And it's not a particularly nice standard to see stamped out around town, because it sort of drops the quality of the environment for everybody looking around it. But that's not really why you're here. You're here for the four-foot strip, I guess, primarily. So I have to say that I don't know why we should grant that. Frankly, I don't see why you should be allowed to have a two-foot strip, and everybody else needs to have a four-foot strip. So I'm not going to support that.
Understood.
Jason.
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, the question I would usually ask in a case like this, since the four-foot buffer is intended to be a buffer for the neighbor, well, first of all, what's the... it's kind of hard to tell from the photo. What's along the property line? There's no kind of fence there.
In the back, there is a fence. On the right side, there's a fence right now. Between the neighbor on the left, there is no fence.
There's none at all? So the property...
We just have... Yes, property is just open.
Okay. What's... Have you... I assume you've spoken to them about this?
Oh, yes. Yes, we have a great... Anytime we start the project in Watertown, this is one of many we've done, and anytime we started, we always have conversations with neighbors. And so far, we have a great relationship. We're very open about our plans, what's planned to be at the property. And the neighbor on the left specifically, I think Wilson, you had more conversation. So there, everybody's open.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I'm most concerned about the neighbor, that this would impact the most. Are they...
On the left.
On the left, yeah. Are they either here, or have they put anything on the record in support of it? Or you're just... I'll take your word for it.
Right. I'm not sure if they put anything on the record, but so far, as I said, we had a conversation, and that neighbor is full in support of what are we doing and how are we doing it. So I haven't... I mean, if... I feel like if he had a pushback, or he was not satisfied, he's aware of what we're doing. So just calling Watertown and, you know, submitting.
He asked us to clean his lawn.
Right. So the landscaping was done, because this property was overgrown, and some of the overgrowth of the plants was coming to his property, so...
And he asked us to clean his lawn.
Yeah, so we've cleaned that for him as well.
I assume if there was some major opposition, your neighbor would either be here, or we would have heard about it.
And my assumption's the same, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I just... I looked at this. It was similar to, I think we had a case like this two months ago. It was very similar, where the house was squeezed up against the property line, and we reduced the buffer. And I just question, maybe have your engineer just take another look at the back parking. You got the two tandem spaces back there?
Mm-hmm.
And if you have two cars in the two side-by-side spaces, how is that car that's the farthest to the... I guess it would be to the east, to the right on the plan, you know? How are they going to get in and out? Other car is behind it. They're backing out. There's no way to get by. So I would just think about that. And maybe it's just something that the tenant's going to have to do, just to deal with.
Right.
I know I do it. We have a tandem garage, so we do...
The assumption is that tandem parking will belong to one of the units.
Okay.
So that one family will have that part.
They'll still have to deal with that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So I have a question just on circulation in the lot. Those two spaces that we were just talking about at the far end...
Mm-hmm.
Is the plan that the people using those spaces will back all the way out to the street? Or are they going to be cranking around and driving over the unmarked driveway in order to make a turn to drive straight out headfirst to the street? Because that would increase the impervious area.
You mean coming through the right side?
So if you back... If you drive in...
Right.
And then crank around to the right to park, and then someone comes in after you and stack. It's a stacked parking. How do those two cars get out? Are they backing all the way out past the main window?
They will have to back up.
All the way out to the street? Or are they going to crank around to the left and turn what is shown as lawn into effectively pavement?
That's actually not allowed. The ordinance requires that 10-foot rear yard to remain as...
Well, it doesn't mean they won't do it. Effectively, it turns the rest of it into mush, into mud, and you end up paving it. If you're a good landlord, you'll pave it once it turns into dirt, but...
Right, so I...
You won't be there to direct traffic, for them to back out 100 feet, or whatever that is.
Right.
I suspect they'll crank around.
So, yes, usually, when we do this type of renovation, we sell it to owner-occupy... it's owner-occupied units, so we're bringing in families that will live in it.
So these will be condo... condos?
Right, yes. Yes. And...
That doesn't really change it, but it's a little better.
Right. We... I guess there's a hope that they will, you know, pay attention to what the grass and keep their yard and everything, you know, neat. That's the hope, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, it's a better situation with ownership, for sure.
Right.
But still, it'll happen, and that'll reduce the impervious, or it'll increase the impervious.
Unless there is a little bit of a... Yeah, some landscaping around it that won't prevent it from...
Like a curb or something.
Yes.
I was just going to say a curb.
Bump or something that will prevent from doing it.
Yeah, or curb.
They can kind of like... We do that line with the scene. We either like a four feet, right on one knee.
If it's possible to crank around and go headfirst out to the street, they will do it. You know this, right? We are all of the same genes.
Then I'm hopeful for this.
So any questions in the audience? If not, we are probably on the verge of a recommendation.
All right. I move that the planning board recommend to the zoning board of appeals their approval of this request to extend the driveway to provide parking in the rear and eliminate the four-foot buffer.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Good.
One.
One opposed?
Yep, don't forget that one.
Four to one. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So our next case is 23 Elm Street.
Oh, good. I just can work. Yeah.
I don't think this is going to be played.
You don't think so? Oh, that's right. They play everybody. And I have some... as well.
Yep. I think you're probably right. Don't forget, seen all of this, so... Just new information?
Yeah, I got the plan out of today. I mean, it's just a small tweak on it.
It has some very minor changes that were a request of ours.
Maybe you can just show them on the screen, because...
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, hello, members of the board. My name is... My name is Mike Ross. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Prince Lobel, and I represent NSAJO Holdings. NSAJO Holdings is represented here today by Aidan O'Donovan, president and CEO, and his colleague Tyler Vines. And then we also have Dan Linsky, who is our chief of security. Dan is the former police chief of the Boston Police Department, worked closely with Watertown once upon a time. The... This is an organization that's been before you previously. We did so to open a... or in the process of opening up a...
Do you need a few minutes to get organized, or what?
Well, it's more technology here than I'm trying to... Oh, good. This is good. We're so close here. Hold on one second here. There we go. Thank you for your patience here. All right. So, you know, we have been before you before, and I wasn't sure how much you wanted to see. I did create a presentation that gives you a little bit of a... kind of a history and a background here. So what I'll... maybe what I'll do is just go kind of quicker through those items and stop and pause on the plans themselves, if I might. You know, just to give you a sense of where cannabis is. This is a little bit old, this information, but still relevant. There's over, you know, close to now, probably close to 4,000 applications, many of them complete. There are hundreds of retail applications currently underway in Massachusetts. 30 are actually open. 30 dispensaries are open in Massachusetts. We looked at Watertown, just to give you a sense of what you can expect, obviously, in your town, but also around your town. And those numbers represent the upper limits, or actually, rather, the lower limits of what will be required in each one of your budding towns. So you see three is what Watertown will settle in on, but Newton has eight, Waltham will have four. Boston is going to have 52. And just so you know, those numbers aren't arbitrary. Those numbers come from 20% of the number of liquor stores per municipality, and that's how they get those numbers. So we can come back on that. Watertown voted in favor, and because you voted in favor, that 20% rule gets triggered. For an adult-use facility, there are separate rules that relate to them versus what was applied to the medical regime. They have to be 21 and older to enter. There's a different amount of what can be sold to patients. It's less than medical. Medical has a much higher threshold for what can be sold in terms of amount and in terms of even dosage. We can talk more about it if you want to. Here's the plan. This is 23 Elm Street. And I guess just to steal the headline, not a lot changes between what was originally built by the medical marijuana facility at 23 Elm Street and what is going to be built by the adult-use facility. The bulk of the changes occurred that were changes that were made to the medical facility. Really, the only thing that will distinguish the medical from the adult will be a rope instanchment line to the point-of-sale systems. That is it. This is strictly a used... a use matter that's before your body today. This is the site plan at 23 Elm Street. And what you have here, if you're familiar with this plaza area, the rear building, Building Two, is the building that we're in. And we are approximately 2,500 square feet of Building Two. And we are... And it was deliberate that we were in the rear, because when we first began this process back in 2016, you know, there was a... I think there was a different mindset with the industry than there is today. It's changing. And so there was an attempt to be in the rear of the property, not to be, you know, welcome to Watertown, here's your cannabis dispensary, but being a little bit more kind of in the rear. That was the idea behind it, and that was how we cited this medical facility. And incidentally, the medical facility is not yet open. We have... I could walk you through kind of where we've been, but its opening is imminent. It's built out. I have some photos here. I'm going to show you of that as well. These are exterior renderings of Building Two, and you can see in one of the diagrams here, the orange that reflects the portion of the building that will be the dispensary. So we will share a party wall with another entity, another tenant. We don't own the building. We are renting this building, or this portion of this building. And these changes that I included in your packet and in the... both the... your initial... our initial filing and the amended filing reflect the changes that occurred from our original medical filing to our... really, really, they're exclusive to the medical filing. There were just changes during the course of construction that made sense from when we initially came before you back in... well, back in 2017. We provided that to staff, and they have that. And we provided that in your packets as well. So I don't expect you to be able to see that. There's some copies in what I just handed in front of you, Mr. Chairman, that you can hand out.
Just to clarify, these were minor amendments that were made during the building permit process and after the zoning board, based on the conditions of approval of the zoning board, approval from that previous permit. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I'm also not seeing it in the initial filing, so this would have been in the supplement that I have just handed to you now, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
And it can be... And you'll find it on tab three of this supplemental filing, of those packets that are right in front of you.
Yeah, I guess we need these.
If you don't mind, yeah. There you go.
Thanks, Ray.
And I just want to show you... Let me just quickly go through with the other items that are in that packet. So there's this... The reason why this is handwritten by the architect is we took the initial filing back from our medical marijuana filing to the zoning board of appeal, and we drew on that where... This was our as-filled drawing. The second... So we drew out the changes on that, but the second drawing here is... This is actually the permitted plan. This was the plan that your planning department, or that your building department has, and we bubbled, or we circled the changes that were in there. And we're talking about minor changes, moving a bathroom sink or toilet. Nothing was... Nothing was an extreme change at all, but your regulations are very clear that any changes to the control documents must be shown. And so that's what these sets of three documents... three plans are. And then finally, this is the as-built plan, item three. And again, very small changes. They're indicated on the... So item three, the as-built plan, from left to right, modify existing toilet room as shown, construct a custom vault at the upper portion of the building, and then delete vestibule. We had a vestibule that... for entry, and we didn't need that. We deleted that. So those were the types of changes that were made on that, on the set of plans from when we first appeared before you for medical. And then back to your main set of plans, back to the main filing, these are elevations that are consistent and the same with what we filed. These are exterior photos of the property. And now here is the interior. This is actually what it looks like right now. It's been fully built out. It's been, you know, a high-quality interior fit-out. We've put a lot of resources into the facility, and it's going to look... It's going to look really nice. It's just your entry where everyone has to check in, present a secure ID. Dan Linsky is here, as well as our operations people, so they can actually walk you through what that's like, if you want us to. This is from looking... From the security view, looking out. There's some additional information about security that I'm going to just skip through, and this is our timeline for opening. We tend to give this information out when we do a community meeting. Obviously, we're at the ZBA or Planning Board phase right now, and we had that pegged for July to September 2019. So we're... This was our optimistic timeline when we first started.
It's updated.
So we didn't update this timeline, but as you can see, we're, you know, it takes longer. Everything takes longer than what you imagine. And then, you know, if we're successful to be able to open as an adult facility, we have not only the host community agreement that's been signed and entered into and approved by the city council, but, you know, we have a deliberate... We will be hiring locally. We will be contributing to the success as a good corporate citizen of this community. And, you know, our president and CEO has been at every single one of these meetings. Aidan O'Donovan, I think some of you have met him before. He's available to talk through it. Let me just... One other high point. Your... So when I came here today, and there's nothing like a deadline to get people to do what they need to do. We... I have a... I actually have an updated parking analysis form. So we, as I mentioned, the area, the 23 Elm Street area, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven tenants there presently. We identified their use. We looked at their zoning, and we made sure that what we're... that everything fits. The site plan is correctly counting the number of cars, and that those cars are correctly placed throughout the... throughout the site. The total number of spaces that are required for this entire area is 36 by zoning, and there are 51 spaces on-site. We have 25 of those spaces. So we have the 13 spaces that we're required...
22.
22? Thank you, sorry. We have the 13 spaces that we're required to have, and then as a result of the community process and the city council process and just talking to the people in this community, we identified the additional eight parking spaces.
Nine, yeah.
From... Well, 14 to...
13.
13, okay, sorry. Nine, thank you. Thank you. The additional nine parking spaces on the site, paid for it with our, you know, in our lease, and we will now have 22 parking spaces. So that's been updated. That's tab one of your... of your supplement. Tab two is the updated site plan, and it's virtually identical to the site plan that we presented to you. However, it's the parking summary in the upper right-hand corner of this... Tab two of this site plan, that's been updated with, you know, actual lease information. We had the engineer was using flyover information. We had the engineer was using flyover information. It was very close, but we wanted to be exact there. So again, you have the same, 36 spaces required, 51 provided. If you look at this site plan, this becomes, I think, really the meat of why we're here. This is again, Tab Two of the supplemental. This has the 51 parking spaces laid out, where they're going to go. They've mostly been consistent with the guidance we've received from the ZBA, from the Planning Board and the ZBA. We kind of literally have gone through every one of these parking spaces with staff. Just getting, just so you know, there's, we identified an additional parking 50, number 50, on this plan. That's right next to Building One.
I suspected that would be a spot.
Yeah. And it still allowed us room for the existing door that's there, and we hashed that existing door, so you see that. We also removed a dumpster to allow for greater, and that's been identified on this. We maintained the, we didn't try to add another tandem space next to Building Two. We were warned, and we wisely backed off of that. And so, yeah, so this is, this is it. This is really the parking and site plan that, that took a lot of coordination with the landlord and with your staff to make sure we were doing what we needed to do here. And then I think that's, let me just see, there's a Tab Three here, and the Tab Three I already walked through with you as well. So that's kind of what I have given you, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, is there a staff report that would be useful?
There is a staff report. So this is an amendment to the previous special permit, ZBA 2017-03. It's adding an additional use to the site, and so we felt that it was more appropriate to amend this than to add a second special permit on top of this and have two separate sets of conditions. Because of that, there was a few conditions that need to be altered as I go through the report to ensure that it matches consistently with it just being a marijuana facility rather than medical marijuana only. And so this is, you know, a modified staff report from the previous one with some specifics around what occurred during this process. So I think we've gone over the site in detail. You've looked at the site previously in 2017 and recommended approval, and it was approved and has been implemented as approved. So it's actually easier to see where the parking spaces are now versus in 2017 when nothing had been striped on the site yet. There has been a community meeting held on August 21st, 2019, as a requirement of the state and also at the local level. That's our now current requirement. I'm not going to go over the permitting history because it's not relevant to the, to the additional use or the plan consistency. I, one piece to note with the plan consistency, and I think it was talked about just now, is that from a perspective of a retail use, which in some ways this is the best fit, you would expect it to be out on the street with permeable windows, et cetera. But because of the nature of the site and the industrial uses there, this is an appropriate location for that set to the rear and with the requirements for obscured windows, et cetera. So there is four criteria for a review and approval of this, and the key components that, this is adding an additional use, but the additional use is within the exact same space, and so it's really, it's the same use, but it's expanded. But from the zoning table, it's two separate uses, but it's for the exact same facility. And so what we identified was looking at what this additional use could do, and our primary focus was on the potential number of increased visitors during, and in particular during peak hours. And therefore, we recommended some conditions around customer and parking management to ensure that the site doesn't have any issues with overflow into the public way. And so this has been coordinated with Watertown Police Department as well, and so we've had some conversations with them to make sure that they have a approved plan when they open and then a monitoring plan as they move forward. When the initial project was proposed, they had various, what we now call transportation demand management, or TDM, components, but at that time, the town didn't have an ordinance. And so now we've recommended a condition to have them consolidate their transportation demand management into an actual document that would be reviewed and approved by our transportation planner, as other sites have done, including the site adjacent to them, which is, has the Jimmits in it, directly behind them, has gone through that process. So they have a monitoring program now in place. And so these are, these are some of the, I'm not, I'm jumping around, but from a, from the specific site, we believe it is appropriate, but that we would want to be cautious in this being the first retail store to open in Watertown. And as the more urban areas are, more stores open, it'll, it'll become apparent pretty quickly with, if there's going to be any kind of issues and that they would, if they need to institute more of a reservation plan or other aspects for the site. I'm not going to get into the details there because it's the same findings. So we, again, right, talked about the reservation program for the first week and then reviewing that and also the traffic management. So from a perspective of adversely affecting the neighborhood, those are conditions that will ensure that that is not the case. The, there's no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles and pedestrians. They've actually substantially improved the layout of the site and created an ADA access and ramp that's been actually implemented, and staff worked with them after, once the planning or zoning board approval occurred to ensure that their site plan was finalized in an appropriate way. There's additional 14 to 15 spaces that are left over after this site is used. That parking analysis, which you don't always see, was just ensuring that the site can, meets the zoning for the other uses on the site as well, with the expanded parking that they are proposing. So from that perspective, there's no nuisance or serious hazard, and there's reasonable connections from these parking spaces to their facility. And then there's, again, a condition that speaks to opening day strategy, which they had identified, that provides for police details, parking attendants, and wayfinding assistance. And then there would be daily analysis of that strategy to ensure that it's meeting the expectations and would be adjusted or removed if it's found that it's not necessary. And that's been incorporated into the conditions as well. They also have, the big piece that was changed on the new site plan, the brand-new site plan, is that they removed a previous trash container that was very, very large, and they now have just smaller toters that are much more reasonable for this type of use rather than the previous industrial use. And so that cleans up the site, and it's tucked in against the building instead of having, you know, each, each separate tenant has their own trash containers, and the other tenants have much larger ones, but now they have a much more reasonable one that is, that matches their type of use. So the, the conditions are as identified, key conditions that would be modified would be the control documents themselves since they've been submitted, so we would update those as part of the process to go to the zoning board. And then Condition Number 11, there was previous reference to medical marijuana facility, so that would be struck out, and it would just read "Operations of the Facility for Conducting Business," and any kind of operations of ATMs or other types of things would be inside of the building. And then Condition Number 19 and 20 are new conditions, and in adding Condition 20, it became clear that there needed to be a reference to an opening day strategy for the adult use, not, not for the facility for the medical, which is, could be opening at any moment. So there's just a clarification to add the word "for adult use" and a clarification on the second sentence of 20A to clarify that they would be reviewed with the Watertown Police Department. And then 20B, there's a word "should," and it would be replaced with "shall." And that is the staff report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
It sounded like you're signing off on the radio or something. So do we have board questions, comments? Go ahead.
Sure. Yes, first of all, I'm curious, what's been the holdup on the medical opening? Is this just sort of like approvals or licenses or is construction, what's going on?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I actually, I did, I spared you, I removed you from, I removed that section from this presentation, but we actually have like five slides in tiny print that explains what, and it comes down to a couple of things. In order to open, you cannot open your dispensary until your cultivation site is open. The cultivation site is a massive undertaking. It's a multimillion-dollar effort that's in Pittsburgh, and that's where the plants are grown, and that's where everything happens. And getting the financing for that and putting that all together is a complex exercise. The state started to allow people in this similar situation to open their dispensary when they are ready to open. We've been ready to open for months. In June?
May.
May. The buildout finished in May of 2019. We got our certificate of occupancy in June. So we've been right open since June of 2019, and, and some dispensaries similarly positioned are allowed to just purchase from other cultivators. When the law was originally written, it was that you had to be vertically integrated, and there could be no other purchasing from outside. And so we've been trying to get this, there is a waiver that allows for that to happen. We've been trying to get it, and it's very hard to get things. And I think getting anything on, right now, getting the attention of the CCC on medical as opposed to getting the attention of the CCC on the adult use, it's hard enough right now. I think you've been seeing and reading how it takes a good seven months to even look at your application for adult use. Medical is not even well-positioned either because it's something that the CCC never did. They inherited it from the DPH, and there's not a lot of people asking for medical licenses. Everyone is asking for the adult use license. We've, we said that we were going to open medical here and start there. That remains. We could be given that any day now. If you want to add anything to that, Aiden, do you want to come up here? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we're really hoping to be on the agenda by the end of this month, but February at the latest, we think, for finally being on the CCC's agenda. We've been working for this, towards this for two years. I mean, at no point have we, I mean, we had our financing in place almost two years ago. At no point did we intentionally slow down the process. Again, it's unfortunate that that slide was omitted from this particular presentation, given that the question came up. I think you might have been at the, yeah, we could probably pull it up, at the, at the community outreach meeting and our meeting for our host community agreement with the city council when, when that came up a lot, so it was included. But I mean, you know, we've been going back and forth with the regulators for years, and they're wildly understaffed. And like Mike said, the DPH, the Department of Public Health, was originally handling medical. They never wanted anything to do with it. As soon as the CCC took over, it was, became a game of hot potato where nobody could get an answer, one way or another, what was happening with the medical program. Meanwhile, patients have suffered, businesses have suffered. I mean, we've been paying rent, and it is a five-figure rent at this site every month since, I believe, June 2016. So, you know, when you add in all the construction cost, everything, I mean, it's, you know, we have and have had every incentive to open as, you know, as soon as possible. And oh, here it is. So, yeah, I mean, this just, this just kind of walks you through all the steps, and there's pretty much, you know, at least 90 days in between each one.
I think we got the point.
Yeah. Which is why I'm just always apprehensive now. I've learned my lesson to not ever, you know, I'm saying cautiously, optimistically, we should be on the agenda next month, but notice how I'm not saying, "And we'll be open by the state." I think I came in here a few years ago naively, sort of, you know, expecting that the regulators would have their act together, and, you know, I don't want to disparage the state, but it's, it's been frustrating, so.
Thank you. So, and the other question I have is, I find this opening day strategy very intriguing, and it makes me, I want to, the question I want to ask is, what, what should we expect on the first day, the first week? Is it, I mean, obviously, if you're anticipating, you know, police details and whatnot, you're anticipating lineups out the door. I'm just wondering, like, when does this dissipate?
Yeah.
You know, based on previous experience at other ones?
Yeah. So, I mean, the whole, the thing that I think everyone in this area of the country is so, in this area of Massachusetts is so concerned about is because we've all seen NEDA, and NEDA is the busiest dispensary in the country. It's $72 million in revenue, I think it did, in, in one year, which is astounding. Believe me, these other dispensaries that are open, I think they're averaging 11 million or, you know, 10 million, something like that in Massachusetts. There's, there's one that opened on Lynn, on the Lynn Way, and they were expecting massive lines, and, you know, very, not a lot of people showed up. I think they just recently put some sort of billboard above it or something like that because no one was, adult use, we're not talking about medical. What Aiden is seeking to open in the next couple of weeks, you know, is going to be medical. In order to get in, you need to have your ID card. A lot of people don't want to go get the ID card. A lot of those people just said, "Look, I'm going to wait for adult use. Adult use is here." If you're, you know, if you're a government employee or if you are working in a, in a kind of, in an environment where you just don't want to be on any list like that, or you don't want to pay the extra couple hundred dollars and go through the process of getting the, the medical, the medical ID, you might just say, "I'm going to do adult use." We can only service the people with the ID cards, and the numbers there are not terrific. So when we first open for medical, you won't, I don't think you'll see anything. If you live next door, I don't think you'll see anything, literally. It will probably be slower than most any retail-type store that survives today in 2020. When the adult use kicks in, and that's where probably seven months from that at best, because like I said, the CCC hasn't even, they don't even look at the applications until seven months as before. Imagine if the Planning Board or ZBA had that type of flexibility, then, then you'll see, you'll see more activity for sure. This will be Watertown's first. But then I'll, I'll direct your attention to this, to this slide here. I mean, you, you now have, these, a bulk of these will open. Boston, you know, Alston will be open. I'm trying to think of the, Brighton will be, I mean, the neighborhoods that are closest to Watertown will all be open. And the reason why NEDA in Brookline has this problem is because there isn't a single store in Boston, in our, in the capital city, open. There's not a single adult use open right now. In Boston, there are, there are medical. And, you know, I'm, I'm a fan of Boston. I live in Boston, but Boston hasn't opened yet. And so as a result, the, you know, the 700,000 people who live in Boston, they say it's about 20% as a customer base. For many, the nearest dispensary is that, is that Route 9 NEDA. And so it's been, they've been funneling in that direction, not to mention all the people who go home on Route 9 coming from the city that don't live here but, but work here, or work in Boston. So I, to answer your question, the long about way is that a good number, dozens of adult use will be open around you. Newton will have, I would predict, three or four or five open. There's already two open right now, or one certainly, and I think the second one's about to. And I don't think you're going to see, I think you're going to see a $10 million a year store if I had to guess it, and I have no idea. I mean, I'm just throwing out numbers there because, and that's, if you do the math and start to back out in the throughput and the average cost of maybe $100 a transaction or $75 a transaction over the course of a day, you, I don't think you're going to see it. Now, on a Columbus Day weekend, on a Friday, you know, maybe on something like that, when everyone gets their paycheck, you know, maybe that's when, you know, Dan Linsky calls the chief of the Watertown Police and says, "Hey, you know, should we put an extra detail on? We don't know. We haven't seen it yet." You know, that type of stuff. I think we're, that's going to be probably more what we're going to be thinking. Obviously, the opening day week, we'll do it as long as we need to. We're happy to do appointment-only for that first week, you know, which is all through your cell phone and all that, but we really do not believe it will be necessary, based on what's even happening today, to restrict sales and try to artificially slow down sales. Technology allows a lot of pre-ordering, and these days, most people do everything on their cell phone. So we'll have, you know, we'll have a good system in place where people can come and pick up their products, but we're not delivering out of this facility. We are, you know, you have to show up. And so, you know, there are other facilities that will deliver. There are other opportunities for, for the public. So we'll be working hard to get our market share in Watertown.
So this opening day strategy is basically worked out between Mr. Linsky and his group and the chief of police?
Just to speak, it's the-
Just be, it's the, it's the police department and our department. So Steve McGoon would be involved with that as well, just to, we, we would be coordinating it and the, anything that the police determine is appropriate would be, would be done too. So, that's, our conversations with them, they, they wanted to ensure that there's still connection to the special permit. And so our department would be involved still.
So for adult use, are people just picking up the product or is it actually used on site?
There's no use on site whatsoever. We can get a lot of trouble for that. And in fact, we make-
I'd said, I think, you know, it's, obviously this is about a change in use, really, is what we're, we're talking about here. And I had some concerns about the, just some clarifications about the opening day strategy and who's reviewing what and who's approving what. And had emailed Gideon about it and understood a little bit more of the police department's involvement to date already. And it's good there. And I did just note, you know, in the, the traffic stuff, there's, talk about the pass-by trips and, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm, you know, civil engineer, but I know enough. Just looking at that, that just seemed like that was taking off too much, too much of a deduct the way it was, it was being applied and wasn't necessarily appropriate. So, but again, I would defer to a traffic engineer. And just in terms, you were just talking about your timing being August, in, in terms of potentially opening, just, you may be aware, you may not be aware, most of us that live in Watertown are aware that the target across the street is probably at its busiest between the third week in August and the middle of September as all the college kids come back.
Back to school, yeah.
You know, if there's, is a way to move your timing of your opening around that just to avoid that added stress, you know?
A wild, wild guess. If it's not over, it could be February 2023. Based on the, semi decisions, but you know, obviously a three years ago. If you would ask me, will you be open for medical by 2020, it would laugh. So, you know, obviously if that, if it ends up being in that pipeline though, I think we'll definitely take it into account and, and work with the city.
Right, and obviously the planning department and the police department are aware of that, that situation as well, so.
That's kind of the whole concept of the opening day strategy. I think we're, we're doing that in response to just, from getting the office of the police department, not because we're, it's big to do, kind of because we want to be a good corporate citizen and a good, you know, neighbor and, and co-opponent. You know, we don't actually think it's going to be necessary.
And that's the, the ongoing relationship from the conversation with Watertown Police. I was at a meeting with Chief Wong, his senior management staff, the fire department, police department, including his traffic officers, came out to the site and, you know, we had a whole day walk around, half-day walk around of what we're doing, how we're working. And that the ability to change is exactly what I want to look for. So maybe there's a parade that indicates that it would be a good time for us not to be up and running. We want to be able to be flexible and change based on the circumstances at fine, you know, the plan out or that day, that week, that month. The technology allows us to change in mid-force of the day, setting up access to our clients to say, "Look, it's, it's busy. You're going to have to have gotten here with an appointment or, or get here before six or we're not going to be able to take area and make sure that we're being flexible."
So my only question about this is, as I walk around this site, we've approved already most of it, it's just it's changed. It's a fairly depressing scene. It's a gray building, no planting anywhere. Kind of dip down, I can imagine the middle of the winter, that's going to be a little tough in terms of walking down there. So you would hope that over time, that either, the building would be painted or something, you know, it, it just, it's tough, you know? It, it, it looks like it's catering to a problem. I just have to say that. It looks like it's catering to a social problem. It's a tough site. So, anything you can do, in my opinion, to make that a little better, whether it's-
We've done a little bit in the last few weeks. I don't know much in the other areas, due to your time, just went up.
I beg your pardon?
I said, we've done, we actually made some progress in the last few weeks. We have painted, but we've done a little bit of aesthetic work from the outside, at least signage has gone on. It's tough to get on the building and this, you know, our, our landlords continually completely rather, you know, talk salad, it's a potential-
Anyway, it's just, just, I needed to say that. The other thing is, the vault on the exterior wall, does that make sense?
Yeah. Did we move the vault? Was that, that was a change that we pointed out.
If somebody really was desperate, couldn't they get through that wall?
Do you want to come over?
So the vault is, is built and it's supported with a nine-wake steel mesh on top of it. It is supplemented with intrusion detection, vibration detection.
Okay, you got it. So, so anyway-
Two, two different systems. Anyone who comes to that, if we start getting drilling, when somebody starts trying to go through bricks, you're going to get to a steel mesh after some cutting. And our team should have seen that in the video camera and responded with an alarm one before they did that.
Okay. So, questions in the audience? Wow, interesting. Yes, ma'am. Truly here for the next project.
Thank you. Happy New Year to all. I'm Angie Cunellis, 55 Keenan Street, East End Town Councilor. Let the record show that when this proposal came before the boards for the medicinal dispensary, I was opposed to it, as I still am opposed. I feel the site is isolated and it's not conducive to this type of use. The area is in close proximity to residential properties and the residents of the East End deserve quality of life. I hope it's not going to turn out to be a one-stop shopping in association with Target, where young people are brought in by buses from the local universities to actually do their shopping at the beginning of the school year. I do have major concerns here and I hope that this location doesn't come back to haunt us. Yes, there will be three locations in Watertown. That's already been agreed. But I do not feel that this particular site is the appropriate location, whether it be as a medicinal site or a recreational site. Many residents spoke in opposition and their concerns did not make it to the files or the records because they were brought forward in a different process. And Mr. Schreiber over here can enlighten us about all of that information when we first decided to discuss marijuana. So that's my position, should be noted on the record. I know it's going to go forward, but let's hope that all the safeguards are in place so that it's not going to be a detriment to the East End of Watertown. Thank you.
So that raises a question. Do you own this building or lease it? Or what's the story?
Leasing.
Lease it?
Yeah, we would lease it. And as, as Aiden mentioned, it's, I understand it's currently being marketed for sale, the entire area. So, you know, perhaps someone will come along and upgrade that space.
Okay. No other questions?
How long is the lease?
I'm, I actually don't know.
Yeah, it was another two and a half years. We're working on the sections, but again, it's a complicated situation with the, with the building being for sale and then other current buyer pipelines, so we've been communicating with them. But we would obviously like that much longer, at least, because we do our, but, you know, there's, you know, we play that.
We'll be looking to extend that, obviously.
So any other thoughts, questions, concerns? If not, let's have a motion if we could. This also has to go to the zoning board.
Um, I moved at the planning board recommend to the zoning board of appeals that the previous approval be amended to allow a special permit under section 5.01.5L. Adult use marijuana be granted with the conditions as noted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed?
Thank you.
So, our next case, which I think you're all here for, is 19 Coolidge Street, or Coolidge Hill Road, I should say. It all came to, is this new?
No, this is the presentation.
Sure, why not?
No, okay.
Captive audience. It's more exciting than I thought it was going to be.
You ain't seen nothing.
That's because it's a back. Is there a button to do dual screens on that?
So what do these, what do these sloping lines mean? I couldn't figure that out.
It's just the outside, yeah, it's just the outside.
Sod thing.
Yeah, it's just-
Took me a lot of gear.
Can run this?
It didn't look totally different than that. That almost looked fun.
It almost looks, I mean, that's the, unless this, that's the corgi.
We could ask about it. Maybe, maybe that's the backdrop and this is something a little more fun, but.
See where's-
Still all, what do they say, lipstick on a painting?
Appreciate your patience here.
Okay. Thank you for your patience. So my name is Paul Frera. I'm principal with, thank you, owner, the sponsor of the project and here to discuss the proposed project today. And thank you for taking the time out of your, your evening to learn more about the project. First, I want to thank the, the planning staff and zoning staff, including Steve McGoon, Gideon and, and Mike Manna for their efforts to date, guiding us through this, this process and providing some of their thoughtful comments. Hopefully everybody can hear me here. With me here today is our legal counsel, Bill York, our director of design and construction, Eric Vogel, Bob Michaud, MDM Transportation, our traffic engineer, Scott Doty, Crowe Engineers, both Civil and Landscape Architects Force, and, and Owen Egan, Patrick Fox and Nolan Carrier from Consensus Strategies. They were, worked with us on some of the public outreach, all of whom are available to answer some questions after we're done here today. Before turning the short presentation over to Eric Vogel, I'd like to provide a brief history and outline of some of the key benefits of our project. We acquired the site back a couple of years ago now and after careful study, we decided to redevelop into Class A climate-controlled self-storage facility, along with a minor mix of approved uses within the town's zoning ordinances. We spent nearly two years working with the planning department, their design review team, as well as conducting extensive outreach with the community, some of whom are here, are present here today to, to offer their continued support. The product of these efforts and the community support has led us to, to the proposed project, which includes approximately 73,000 square feet of a Class A climate-controlled self-storage facility that is fully compliant with the town zoning ordinance. In addition, as sponsors, we provided a number of amenities, a few of which are worthy of highlighting and which Eric shall explain in further detail. Number one, a public pocket park. To the east of the building, directly abutting the multifamily, is a landscaped pocket park available to all the area residents, you know, at all times of the day. Number two, the public plaza we're calling on Arlington Street. In design review meetings with the town, we've set the building back substantially beyond the zoning limits on Arlington Street and created a substantial landscaped area allowing for greater visibility of Philippello Park and created, I'm sorry, visibility of Philippello Park and the bike path. Number three, public community space. The sponsors created approximately 1,000 square feet of separate community space for the exclusive use of the town, for the exclusive and perpetual use of the town at no cost, which is available as the, you know, again, as the town deems appropriate. And number four, which is sort of a catch-all, you know, we, we've also agreed to off-site mitigation, TDM contribution and, and real estate taxes will be substantially increased from, from where they sit currently. The totality of all those benefits approaches three-quarters of a million dollars. So it's a substantial, you know, we think, value contribution of the town, given the size of the project. Again, we appreciate your time this evening and to learn about the project. And I'd like to turn it over for, to Eric, who can explain the project in greater detail. And again, will be available for more questions.
Thank you, Paul.
And thank you for spending your evening listening to a presentation about the project. I'll try to keep it very short and I, we've broken this into three sections, really. Just a brief summary, summary of the existing condition, the process that we've gone through to date, and then the proposed project. As Paul mentioned, the project is located at 19 Coolidge Hill Road, at the intersection of Arlington Street and Coolidge Hill Road in East Watertown. The lot area is approximately 39,134 square feet. Its current use is industrial too and the, the existing building on site was, is an old warehouse. The site has some interesting features in that it is at the bottom of Coolidge Hill, so it is a slope site, which we hope to take advantage of. And it is adjacent to Philippello Park and it's very close to the Watertown Greenway, which is currently under construction. The current, the existing building is non-conforming. It has issues with front setback, side setback, open space and contiguous facade. When we started this process and acquired the land, as Paul said, we did an extensive study on what the different uses could be. And based on a series of, of, of issues, we, we came to the conclusion that self-storage, self-service storage was the least impactful and most appropriate use for the site. After determining this, we sat down with the planning board, or the, the planning department on several occasions to sort of develop some criteria on how to plan the site. There are some very set criteria. The location of the building is really influenced by the dimensional, the dimensional requirements for the park and the adjacent, the adjacent residential area. And we, we took those into account and, and got a really good understanding of the zoning regulations. So these offsets actually created our open space with a 10-foot setback along Coolidge Hill Road, a 50-foot setback on the eastern edge of the building adjacent to the residential area, and a 50-foot setback adjacent to Philippello Park. We then considered and, and looked at the important corner at Arlington Street because it is an important transit path between the Greenway and Philippello Park. There's a lot of bike traffic that actually passes through there. And we, we looked at considering tailoring our building shape and form to create a wider, more gracious area there for transition. We then finally located the parking within the 50-foot buffer between the park and the, and the, and the building and tried to situate that in only one area so that we, we could provide as much open space as possible. So finally, after working through all of this, we came to a layout and a site plan that basically met all of the dimensional requirements and all of the use requirements either as a right or by special permit. either as of right or by special permit. The next step in the process was to start to think about the design of the building and the massing of the building. We had three very productive meetings with the town planners and Gamble Associates to sort of talk about, what, what would the criteria be for a building of this type? And those criteria were set forth sort of in two, two areas. First was massing. The building mass really has a large effect on the urban design character of this area. And the massing of the building should take advantage of the, the site's features, particularly that slope. To try to break the building's mass into smaller forms, using setbacks and layering to develop a variation in the building massing and to sort of emphasize certain key areas of the building. Second part was exterior design, and I think that, you know, as, as you folks know, a self-storage facility isn't really, it doesn't have a public face, except for a small area. And it's very difficult to, it's challenging to sort of address that without putting, you know, without the, the features of, the architectural features of windows and fenestration and articulation. So we said, there's got to be a more creative way to do that, and we were chat, we were tasked to look at what we could do there. We were also asked to look at the types of materials chosen, and also, we, we spoke about using a rainscreen system to create sort, sort of a diverse facade around the, around the building. So with those criteria, we created the proposed project. It's very simple in its form, and I, I think it's, it's, it really is, it really sort of has two criteria. The Arlington Street face, which is not covered by the slope of Coolidge Hill, is actually the public end of the building. It contains the community space and the office for the storage facility. Entrances to both of those areas are on, on the first floor, the community space being off of Coolidge Hill Road, and the entrance to the storage area adjacent to the, to the parking area. As we developed this, as I said, we looked at those dimensions on Arlington Street. And to sort of give you a breakdown of what those are, we, we almost have forty-three feet from the curb line to the corner of the building, at the, at the corner of Arlington and Coolidge, Coolidge Hill, to really open up that, open up that area and open up the view corridor to the park and up Arlington Street. We also took into account the, we also, on the fourth floor of the building, set the building back another ten feet to address the, the height, the, the height issue, the apparent height issue along that facade. Lastly, on the roof, we, we are pursuing an aggressive solar, solar array system to provide power to the building, and we have considered the fact that mechanical equipment that goes up there not only be silent, but also be screened if necessary.
Before you go, before you go on, in the middle drawing, what is, on the left-hand end, what's the red imply?
The red implies on the left-hand end, the, the ten-foot setback.
Oh, it is.
Along, along Arlington Street. So in plan, it's very simple. In section, you can see the Coolidge Hill slope within the section and how we take advantage of it. Instead of following the terrain with the buildings, with, with the building, we actually embedded it into the slope of the hill. The community space, again, and, and offices are located on Arlington Street. And then we have a simple stacking of floors for, for the, for the storage cubes. Or in Coolidge, I'm sorry. On Arlington Street, we have a height of fifty-two feet, but taking advantage of the slope of Coolidge Hill Road, we actually, at Coolidge, at the east end of our building, we're only twenty-nine foot six high, which is actually lower than the adjacent structure. So as you can see in the elevation, we sort of, that, taking advantage of the slope has softened the, the height of the building. Another really important part of this is the public realm. This is a very, it's a, it's an integral connection point between Philippa Park and the Greenway and the neighborhood, and we've spent some time looking at that and using a combination of hard and soft surfaces to complement those areas. Our planting plant currently has forty-nine tree shrub and ground cover species that we'll use. Along Coolidge Hill Road, we will be replacing the existing sidewalk with new sidewalk and any curbs, and we'll be planting new street trees in accordance with the, the town's regulations. In the ten-foot setback, we'll be, we'll be creating a landscaped experience within that setback that will soften, soften not only the building, but also soften the experience down Coolidge Hill Road. On Arlington Street, as I said, within that setback, we're not only replacing the existing sidewalk, but we'll be creating a new planted plaza with, with seating and bike racks that will become that transition area to Philippa Park. On the east side of the property, we're creating sort of a special feature. Although we're right next to Philippa Park, which is a very active park, we are creating a small pocket park, which is publicly accessible, and really for more quiet contemplation by neighbors and by, by residents, and, and for more, more, less, or more passive activities. And then lastly, adjacent to Philippa Park, we are softening the view to the building by creating a planted border, a, a edge of flowering shrubs and, and plants. And we are, the, the hillside that abuts our building will be planted to blend into the, the, the forest-like nature of the park. Another feature was the exterior design, and as we said during the meetings with design review, how do you address a building like this? Well, we, we concluded that the simpler, the better. The, so the building really is, and the view that you're seeing on the bottom is the view on Coolidge Hill Road. The view above is actually the view from the parking lot side, which is, it's misrepresented at the moment, because that's all treed with Philippa Park trees. The, the key materials on the site, which are highlighted in yellow on the elevations, are, again, very simple and, and warm in tone. We're looking at a, for the body of the building, which is the main building, a metal panel system that will be colored in a warm, light gray color. At the nose of the building, which we call the cube, the mass has been inset, so that it creates a feature. The upper part of that will be a custom patterned metal panel system, and then the lower portion, which is the, the office and the community area, will be clad in a, in a storefront, a clear glass storefront system. Both of those components, again, will be a warm color, a little bit darker, create sort of a set, a sense of presence, but sort of also be very subtle.
Are those intended to be the same color?
They're actually, there'll be a tonal difference.
You mean on?
Just a slight, a slight change in the, in the.
In the kind you wouldn't really notice?
Yeah. Well, I think, well, we're hoping you will notice it. We're gonna, we're gonna work on that.
Okay.
The last component of the exterior is the, the rainscreen, and this is something that I think is going, is, is very interesting. To create, again, another layer and pattern on the building, we're cladding the building on all four sides with a vertical slat cedar wall system. That cedar wall system will be held off of the building and create another pattern, another shadow, shadow effect on the building. It also gives us the opportunity to plant that slat wall and create green walls along the elevation of our building. So those are the three major components that we're looking at for the exterior of the building. Bringing that all together, you can see in the rendering at the nose, it really is a subtle change in tones and color, coming together with different, with organic materials and, and, and other materials, and actually factoring in the landscape to create, I think, a very, a very quiet building that doesn't say, doesn't say, "Look at me, look at me", but just says, "I'm here." Again, thank you for the time, and I'm gonna pass it back to Paul.
Just before you leave the podium, just.
Sure.
On that particular photograph, the front part looks like it's vertical, like the, the sheet we just saw. But the main body of the building, it has a horizontal feeling about it. Is that a?
It's, the, the rendering is, we are, and we are still tweaking the design, but we went to horizontal metal. We haven't re-rendered the building yet.
But the rainscreen is both of those sections.
The rainscreen needs to be vertical.
But it, it also runs all the way around.
Yes, it does.
So you're saying the cedar rainscreen is vertebral, vertical, instead of horizontal it's drawn?
Yeah, so if you look at, in this one, those verticals last. They'll be running within that, that shape, that profile, and they'll basically create, you know, they'll.
So it's completely drawn horizontally, but you're, you're telling us that it's gonna look completely different.
Right.
Than what you're showing us tonight. That's not a good plan to do that. If you're, you know, looking for kind of a good, healthy discussion, I think it would be good to present what you plan to build, not to present something you don't plan to build.
Okay.
Again, I think, I think that it's the vertical, it's the color, okay, is the same, it's the positioning of wood.
Yeah, but those things make a difference, and this is right in the community's face. And I think texture and orientation of these materials on a major facade that kind of is relentless in its length and in position, it makes a difference how you do it. And I'm not saying which way is better. I'm just saying, I think when you present something to a community for their support and approval, it's a good thing to present what you plan to build.
I agree with you.
I think that's really important, and it looks very different. I asked the question earlier about the colors, whether they were intended to be different, and you said slightly different.
Subtly, yes.
Yeah, but those kind of subtleties are often lost unless somebody has a lot of talent and follow-through, when the actual materials are spec'd, mocked up, and then ordered, and all of those things. So when you try, when you go for subtle, you, it just doesn't seem like the kind of building that's gonna benefit from subtle.
Well, I think that the only way the building benefits is by subtle. And I, I'll, I'll have to tell you, unfortunately, my OCD as an architect makes sure, or will make sure that everything's mocked up. I, I do agree with you, though, and I think that we could come back to you with a rendering that reflects each of these components. As you know, design continuously evolves, and as we're looking at it, we found out that the horizontal orientation's actually difficult for the rainscreen for installation. The vertical is more appropriate when we looked at it, and actually, I mocked it up, and said, "Wow, that's actually a lot nicer." So let us, let us come back with some renderings for you.
And listen, we can change the rendering. I think you make a good point.
Yeah.
I, it wasn't intentional, it was, it was, we, we actually, and Eric should have said as well, he's twenty-five-year architect at, at CBT, so he does follow-through on the details and the specifications, and so, but we can, we can get a couple more mockups, so we, we make sure that we're not misleading anybody.
Yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't our intention, but.
Oh, I'm sure it wasn't. I know how things go like this. I'm just saying, it's, it's, it's hard. It's a, it's a difficult project anyway.
Yeah.
And then to have the renderings not match what it's actually planned to look like just makes it hard for everybody to have a good, healthy exchange.
We appreciate that.
So I'd like to just summarize, and then we'll, you know, certainly be available for, for questions. So the self-storage is a, you know, as you know, a special permit approved use. You know, today's self-storage facility is, is, is really, you know, no different than a lot of different uses, you know, retail, housing, you know, office. It's, it's a, it's, it's, it's in high demand, you know, lots of apartments being built and, and smaller, and, and difficult to store things, and of course, the growing e-commerce business, you know, really supports this, this type of product. It's a, as you know, a low-intensity nature, you know, minimal parking is required. You know, we've, we've taken some steps as well to collaborate with the town on some shared parking. You know, we, we understand that Philippa Park is, is very active, and so, so we, we think that, you know, folks might utilize the parking during those times. The low traffic volumes are considerable, you know, six to nine trips during the peak periods, and about eighty trips on a daily basis. You know, you know, we have a, a number of bike spaces that are in excess of the requirement as well. The sidewalks adjacent to the site will all be reconstructed, as Eric alluded to earlier. We've contributed to, or will contribute to the multimodal wayfinding signage program. You know, as, as we said earlier, too, the, the, the project has minimal impact on infrastructure such as electrical sewer and water, as well as schools and town facilities. You know, as I alluded to earlier as well, you know, make a substantial increase in, in property taxes once we're done. You know, the, the project also seeks to achieve net zero building status by using the solar panels on the roof and, and some other measures. All stormwater will be contained on site, including the hundred-year flood. And, and, you know, we spent a considerable amount of time studying, you know, the, the building massing, and, and, you know, the proposed, proposed building has no shadow impact on the houses across Coolidge Hill Road during the months of March through December, and, and very limited impacts in January and February, and we have some boards here that, you know, we can show. The project intends to be lead silver, and, and, you know, with us tonight as well, we, we, you know, we spent a good, you know, eighteen months, you know, really knocking on doors, and, and, you know, we have, in the submittal, you, you saw, you know, roughly, you know, fifty or so support letters, and, and we think that, you know, the, the community is substantially in favor of this project, and, and we're hoping that you folks will, will feel the same way. Again, appreciate your time this evening, and, you know, happy to answer questions.
Great. Do we have a staff report?
Sure. So as was, they're requesting a special permit with site plan review, under new construction over five, four thousand square feet, self-storage facility, a building facade up to two-hundred-and-fifty feet, so longer than, they require a special permit for the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot length, or up to. FAR of over one but below two is also allowed by special permit, and a reduced parking of up to twenty-five percent through efforts to encourage alternative modes of transportation. The first, first, I'd like to add a clarification to our staff report. Under the nature of the request, there was a, some misinformation, and we put, identified it as office for a component of it, and it's actually a community space that's one-thousand square feet and not two-thousand. The office component is actually a part of the self-storage facility, and it's incorporated into the self-storage. So this, this table is incorrect, and I've identified the, the incorrect aspects of it. So it's actually one-thousand square feet of community space. We've treated it like retail from, retail slash commercial from a parking perspective, and so there's two-point-eight-six parking spaces required from that, which would require a total of seventeen-point-four, four spaces, which would, if you did apply a parking reduction of up to twenty-five percent, could be as much as four-point-three-five spaces. And therefore, the minimum parking that would be required for the site would be thirteen parking spaces if you applied the, the full twenty-five percent. And so I ju, I just wanted to clarify that, and I would plan to update that in our staff, the planning board report to go to the zoning board. That was identified as a, as an issue. We, under section three, public comments, we, there were, there was a community meeting, and there was numerous public comments made at that, and you received a, a summary of that in your packets. There was also an email sent to the department on the day of the staff report being completed, so it was not incorporated into the staff report. That comment letter was in opposition, suggested that if it was, if it was to be self-stored, they thought it would be more appropriate at three stories, but that they felt that there's better uses. I also submitted that by email to the board earlier today. So that's the one comment letter that we received at the department. From a plan consistency perspective, it's in keeping with our strategic framework for economic development by providing a support type of use and a reuse of this vacant site. And it's also in keeping with the comprehensive plan from the perspective of providing that until of a under-utilizer quasi-vacant site, and providing a building that is reinforcing the street edge, although the, the use itself is not in active use along that street edge, but the addition of the community space, depending on how it's programmed, could provide some activity within that corner. And then the reduction of parking and, and improving pedestrian access and providing some of that, it doesn't say it, but providing that open space aspect of the site. So we've identified the special permit requirements. The project requires a special permit, which has four criteria for approval. From a staff perspective, the first criteria is the site a specific, an appropriate location for such use, structure, or condition. Staff found that based on what the site is zoned for, and what the future land use map is, it can provide a, a mix of uses, and it's within an industrial zone, and so this type of use is an appropriate type of use for that zone, depending on how it is treated at the street edge and how it transitions and interacts with the adjacent properties. And so, and also from other perspectives, it's a low impact, but also it's not strongly positive or strongly negative as a use within this area. The community space and the public spaces that are being provided. The community space and the public spaces that are being provided are a, a component of what's required when you increase the FAR, and those are identified as being open to and for the, the greater public, and not just a, you know, it's not a private open space. So the, the spaces within the front, that's adjacent to the sidewalk as well as to the rear, are a positive aspect of the site and the site plan. The use is developed will not adversely affect neighborhood, criteria number two. The primary focus is a substantial reduction in the amount of vehicles that would be coming to the site even from the previous use. This is about the lowest amount of vehicle or traffic you can create from a use perspective. There's also no impacts on town schools and infrastructure, et cetera. Criteria number three, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles and pedestrians. They've, there is, again, minimal traffic created for the self-storage component. There could be a peak demand based on the traffic study between five and 11 vehicles and up to eight, from four to 6:00 p.m. and up to 80 trips per day. There are 18 parking spaces provided, although 13 of them are standard parking spaces, and the other are also incorporated in as the loading, that required three loading spaces, which is probably substantially more than a, a self-storage facility would require, but it's what the ordinance requires for all light industrial uses based on the square footage. And so they're identified that as, that would, it's consistent with being used for parking as well as for larger vehicles. The type of vehicle that would be coming onto the site would be limited to 35 feet in length based on what they submitted on their plans. And so that would also help with the amount of, and type of vehicles that are coming onto the site from a perspective of vehicles and pedestrians. They've identified the number of bicycle racks incorporated, and they've distributed them to the two public spaces or adjacent to the public spaces. And there's a condition to ensure that they're not creating issue with sidewalk or access and flow from the site, through the site between the, the new Cambridge, Watertown Cambridge Greenway and the Phillip Hill Park bicycle and pedestrian connector. That brings you through to, to, let's see, Arlington.
Crash your phone.
Yes, Grove, to Grove Street. Sorry, had a blank on that. Criteria number four, adequate and appropriate facilities have been provided. There is a condition that they need to, you know, finalize their stormwater and drainage summary. Other utilities, they have very minimum use of their various utilities, but they are satisfactory for this. And the final review for those other components would be required by DPW. There's also 10 criteria for site plan review. I, I don't want to go into all the details of that. I do want to note, under landscaping, that the current site has 80, 88% of the site is impervious, and they are proposing to reduce that to 70%. So it's an 18% reduction in impervious area and create two open space areas, both on Arlington and Coolidge Hill. There is another typo in the staff report that I will modify, that identified a 10-foot wide swath where some of the existing trees would be retained. Oh, no, sorry, that's on the Coolidge Hill roadside, so I misread that. I thought that was north of it, so that's correct. We also had Gamble Associates do a design review. They've had a number of meetings with the staff and Gamble Associates looking at ways to create the step-back and various aspects of the design. And ultimately, there's a design that has a step-back at, at the, at the upper floors along Arlington Street, and they've incorporated some of those suggested changes for their site. Criteria number three, open space, there's a existing 13% open space, and they're proposing 41% open space, which is a requirement of increasing the FAR up to 2.0. That 41% is equivalent to approximately 16,000 square feet of open space, where they currently have 13%. It is divided, as I've said, into two component parts, and they're providing a mix of plantings and benches and bike parking along Arlington Street that we would want to ensure do not become issues for through traffic, as I had said before. Site circulation, they are proposing, as we've already said, up to 11 cars during that peak demand based on their traffic study. They're committed to doing transportation demand management at the basic level, and has, that has been reviewed by the transportation planner and has been approved. They are providing additional bike parking, they're providing improved walking conditions, and they're also providing a contribution towards a municipal wayfinding signage program. And those are the commitments that they've made at this point. They also will be required to improve, to update where necessary the curbing sidewalk and improve the road along Coolidge Hill Road with review and approval of the final scope of that by the Department of Public Works. Criterion five, surface water drainage, there will not, they, they are committing to a stormwater system that will retain 100% of the stormwater on-site for a 100-year storm. There was some initial concerns about some contamination, but they will be rectifying that as part of the improvements to the site. Utility services, we've talked about that, they, they will, all utilities to the site would be required to be underground, and they, is, everything is minimally impactful. Trash and recycling will actually be located inside of the building and would only be brought out and by the private waste management company that, and that's a condition of their approval as identified, and as they identified. Environmental sustainability, one aspect of these types of facilities is that they are very tight because they have very few windows, and so they, they do have easier ability to keep them heated and et cetera. They are providing a lead silver certifiable commitment, and they have provided some other information. They have provided the initial solar energy assessment, and there's a condition as well for the new solar requirement so that more than 50% of the roof, they, I suspect, it appears that they're going for, for much more than 50% because once you're there, you might as well try to maximize that on the roof for this particular type of facility where there's not a lot of HVAC up there, there's more room. Screening, as we said, the trash and recycling will be within the building, so there's no screening required, but the parking and loading areas are screened from Phillip Hill Park with a planted design hedge border. And then safety, criterion number nine, they have identified that they're meeting all building codes, et cetera, and there has been a review by the various departments, and it is satisfactory from that perspective. And criteria number 10, design, they, there was a review by Gamble and Associates, and they have looked at that aspect. They've incorporated, from a light perspective, they have, they will be required to do full cutoff lights. The details of the light poles were not submitted, so we don't, we don't have the, the height component of that, but they will have to meet with the ordinance, which is 20, no taller than 20 feet unless we choose to put a condition in to make them shorter. And then we have a series of conditions. The, today I submitted two additional suggested conditions, and those conditions were based on the clarification of both the community space and the loading area. I submitted that to you by email, and those two conditions would be proposed as condition number 21 and 22. 21 would be community space. The petitioner has committed to providing a 1,000-square-foot townwide amenity for exclusive and perpetual use by the community. The bathroom facilities are designed to be shared with the community space, and it would have a perpetual timeframe for compliance and be DCDP. Because they've, they've committed to the open space on the site, so this, this could have an additional sentence that spoke to the open space on Coolidge Hill Road in that it would be open to the public, but they've identified that throughout their submittal, and so we didn't put that in as a condition because it's a clear aspect, that it's publicly accessible open space on the site. And then condition number 22 is focused on loading. All loading and unloading shall take place on-site, and vehicle length shall be limited to no more than 35 feet, and that's based on what they submitted with their turning radius on the site plans, and so that's, that would be a condition of approval as well. And it would have the same timeframes that our department has the verification. So that's our staff report with the additional two conditions and the modifications to the parking analysis. Thank you.
Do you have questions?
Yes. Can, can I just add one thing?
Yeah.
So not to overstate it, but we, we did conduct, as I said, pretty extensive public outreach, and, you know, we, we, we wanted to just make sure that, unfortunately, I joined another slide, but it's a map showing, you know, the site along with the green dots indicate all those support letters. And the one exception is there's a gentleman here this evening in the front who bought his house, I think it was later, so he, his fire owner has supported, but he is not, he's not here. We didn't, we weren't able to sort of update that map. So one of the dots is incorrect. I think it's 52. So I just wanted to point that out.
So the question is, which dot is incorrect? Is that?
Let's start on this end of the table.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I think we have two things before us with this tonight. We've obviously got the, the use as a self-storage facility, and then we've got the building itself. And as I reviewed this, in terms of the use, I don't have a problem with the self-storage piece. With the building itself, I don't think we're there yet with the design. In thinking about the, the massing and specifically on the Coolidge Hill roadside, I think you're, you're looking at this very stark, big wall. And I was trying to put myself in the, if I lived across the street, what would I want to see? And I, I think we need some more in terms of the setback, step-backs, and maybe even, you know, taking out a part of the top floor to have more of that step-back.
So.
The other thing, the other thing that, as I was looking at this, you know, which made it more difficult, obviously, to kind of reason this out in my mind, is your existing condition survey had the, the roof elevations of all the houses across the street, which was very helpful. So then that naturally led me to looking at your building sections. And as I started looking at it and started trying to reason out what the, the various elevations were on your proposed building, they didn't add up. So it, and they're different also from what was in this, too, in terms of building heights. Where on the high end, we've got 29.6 here, we have 30.6 on one drawing, on one drawing here, and the other section says 28. So I'm having a hard time figuring out exactly what the height of this building is in relation to the other buildings. If I did my math right at night, you know, I was getting out about in top elevation 90.5 for your building. Number 10, 10 and 12, Coolidge Hill's at 77, 14, 16 is at 80, S is 20, and then number 22 and 24, 87. So you've got a, a difference in, in height of three and a half to 13 and a half feet across the street that people are looking at. Needs to be done there in terms of trying to break up that mass from the Coolidge Hill side. The Gamble report, you know, really focused on the Arlington Street side, it didn't really focus on the Coolidge Hill side in terms of, I think there's more that needs to be done there. And then I also, in terms of the, the shadows, so again, I don't know if the shadows were relying on those elevations that were incorrect in here, and are, are we overestimating the shadows? But you had stated in your presentation that, that the houses across the street were not going to be in any shadow in December, is what you said.
No, I said limited.
Limited?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And I can show you with the shadow study here.
Right, but I'm looking at the one, all I've had is the one that I've seen. And I'm looking at this sheet here, and it's showing 14 to 16 in shadow virtually all day. So is that correct or is that not correct?
Well firstly, that's a composite shadow plan.
Yes.
You, you know the shadows move.
Yes.
So they're not, and we have, we've done, we've spent a lot of time now going through a detailed month-by-month shadow study. Particularly for those buildings to understand what their impact is. As we, as we transition out of the month of November, we actually start to have the biggest impact. We start to touch the front porches of the buildings across the street.
Okay.
And then basically go into darkness at the end of the day. That moves through December and January.
Yep.
And February, as, as we start to get longer days, those shadows start to mitigate and pull back, and by March, we don't have a shadow impact again. So it really is, it really is, I think we, we, we really focused on this because we heard from the neighbors that there was, you know, they were concerned about it, and we, we spent some time running some more detailed.
In fact, we, we met with, with one of the neighbors, and it was directly affected across the street, and, and walked them through, and we think, you know, again, we can clarify this, but we're pretty certain that those heights are, there might be some inconsistency of six inches, it sounds like, on one point and a foot on another, but.
You're up by 10 feet.
Yeah, we disagree with that.
Your elevation, the math doesn't add up, that's what I'm telling you.
What I'm saying is, is it's, you know, in the rear of the building, it's 29.6, okay? In the front of the building, it's 52 feet.
Okay.
So the building to the rear of our building, 32 feet.
Okay.
Okay, so 29.6 in the back.
Yep.
52 in the front.
Can you please speak at the mic first?
Oh, sorry.
You know, so 29.6 in the back, 52 in the front, and in the middle, I think the plan is 41 or so, okay?
So, so what I'm saying, so that's, that's helpful, but what I'm saying is, in the, these are going to be the control documents, so.
Okay.
The, the elevations that you show for your various floors, they're off by 10 feet, and they're 10 feet high, so you're actually hurting yourself.
I think you found, and.
There's a math error in there.
Payson, you're, you're absolutely right.
Yep.
And I'm gonna, you're, you are absolutely right in this submission. I'm sorry. We, we, we caught, we caught an error, and it's an error, it's an error that it's, it's hard to remember without everything else going on. But one of the floors is shown 10 feet off. So as, as, as we walked through the elevations and we repaired it in the presentation, our ground floor is at, our first floor is at elevation 37.6. Our next floor is 12 feet high, it's 49.6. In your drawing, it says 59.6.
59, correct.
That is a mistake, and, and we apologize for that.
Right.
After that, the floors are 10 feet, so 59.6, 69.6, 79.6, 89.6. 89.6 is our roof line. And that, that's why, that, that's the criteria. I think we.
That's just something that needs to get cleaned up, is what I'm saying.
I totally agree, and we can resubmit.
You add that into what you were just saying about the, the horizontal versus the vertical, and just like, what are we reviewing here?
Sure. And I want to return to your comment about the Gamble design. I mean, we review, I mean, we spent quite a bit of time with staff, and, and there was a ton of discussion around Coolidge Hill Road. And so, and, and, and what the discussion centered around, unlike Arlington, is that Coolidge Hill had the benefit of topo, okay? And so we feel that the, the whole discussion, you can see it on the, the screen up, we've tucked the building into the, the hillside, you know, at, not in, in substantial cost, you know? And so we didn't follow the grade. And so that discussion had come out, and, and it was, you know, again, I'm not saying, you know, you know, Gamble is the final word or the, you know, this is a dialogue, a discussion, but there was substantial discussion around this. And again, borne out, I mean, we took very seriously the shadows, and, and the people that are affected here are obviously Coolidge Hill Road. And, and by the way, not all of Coolidge Hill, you're only talking about three or four houses.
Four houses.
I, and I may have to, I have to apologize that I, I don't think that we printed out each of Gamble's memos. We printed out the closure memo.
So that was just the, the.
The third memo.
Okay.
The first memo identified all these different aspects. There was a lot of sketches that they were presenting in their, in their PowerPoint. So we, we only submitted the third one because it would have been, you know, like 25 pages of.
Yeah, it's quite a bit of work.
That had changed over time, so.
So where I'm coming from and what I'm, what I'm seeing right now is just saying that you're looking at this big mass, and because we have a zoning envelope that says you can be 50 feet, 55 feet. you can be 50 feet, 55 feet high, doesn't mean we have to be there.
I understand.
And so we got one comment from one of the neighbors saying maybe three, three stories. That may be too small, obviously, there's economics involved too. So I think, I think we need to go back, and I think we need to look at this and, and maybe do more of a stepped design, and with the fifth floor, and stepping that back, and maybe it's only half the height or the length of the, the building. And that may just take away some of that, that big mass, and maybe it gives opportunities to do other things like green roofs or something like that, that will kind of ease that burden on the people that, that are living there. Now, if they come up here tonight and say, I fully support it the way it is, I'll feel differently.
Well, I think that that's.
But that's where I'm coming down.
And I appreciate that.
I don't see us, that we're there yet.
And, and I appreciate that, and I think that's a very important point to focus on, because, you know, we've been in this business a very, very long time, and, and I have never been involved in a project that's had 52 signatures of support. I've never been involved in a project that we spent close to 18 months going door-to-door. And what I want to be sensitive to here, okay, is, you know, we're in the business of trying to build great projects, okay, and satisfying the majority. And, and we can't, we're not going to meet 100% test. And so all I'd ask this board to consider, okay, is that, is that there will be some folks here that I think are going to speak in favor this evening, and, and I think it's important that we, we assess the totality of the support versus the totality of the opposition, okay? Because, you know, we are offering a great deal of benefits here, and, and this project is, is, you know, a challenge as it is at its size, okay? And so, so, you know, as I said, we, the totality of the benefits are approaching, you know, three quarters of a million dollars in our view, okay? And, and so I just, I, I respect that point, and, and we focused on it candidly for, for many months, but I just want to point out that there, there are a lot of folks here that, that, you know, have, have looked at this and are in favor.
I think you find the board does that, but I, I will say in doing that, that we tend to wait a little bit higher the, the abutters, because they're the ones that have to be next to you.
Absolutely, and that's what you have.
We'll hear from them.
Yeah, and that's what you have here.
Just two, two other points, and then I'll yield to my colleagues here. How many storage units total? I think one letter said 450 to 600. I think the staff report said 450. What is the number?
It's 450, you know? I mean, I think that'll, you know, you know, so the, the, the buildings are set up on a 10 by 10 grid.
Okay.
So you can sometimes make smaller units, okay? And so, so that moves a little bit over time.
Yeah.
We think that the number's 450.
All right. Kedian, I was looking back at the AD Elm Street approval when I was going through this, and there was a condition in there that specified like a maximum number of units.
That must have been.
That might be something we should consider here as well for this one. So that's all I had.
Thank you.
Okay. A lot of my points have been addressed, but first of all, just a question, will there be any signage?
Yes, and, and, and that's a TBD, you know, we'd work with the town. I think it, it's, it's, we think that the, the right spot for it will be on Arlington, up, up, up on the highest level. But again, if the town and the board wish it to be in a different location, you know, and there'll be a, there'll be a monument sign as well.
Hmm.
There won't be?
No.
Okay, maybe there won't be.
I can step in just for a moment. The signage, again, is something that it evolves, and as the building facade has evolved, what we're, we're looking at is doing something that identifies the community space and identifies the storage facility on the upper part above the storefront, in the form of either a blade sign or a, or a mounted sign, and trying to keep it as quiet as possible and away from Coolidge Hill Road, because we're worried about, again, lighting and, and everything else. It's, which is, again, I think it's part of the design of this building, is we actually looked at simpler is better on Coolidge Hill, because we don't want lights glaring out there. We don't want all this stuff sort of distracting, so.
Okay.
We will submit a signage plan, I'm sorry, we will submit a signage plan in accordance to that.
Okay. Yeah, because that, that helps envision what we're going to ultimately be looking at. Overall, my reaction is positive. I just, another question, so I'm, we're looking at the north elevation now, Coolidge Hill, and there's green walls and a lot of landscaping, which is, I know you can do it on the north, it's not, it's not the south.
Right.
But on the other side, on the south elevation facing the park, I'm not seeing the same treatment. Is there any consideration to doing a green wall on the south side facing the park?
Absolutely. And I think part of the reason why we didn't do it is, standing in Philopello, looking back, you can't really see it, but, but we can absolutely do it.
Right, right. I'm, I'm thinking of, I mean, first of all, if you're doing it on the north, kind of what you're doing on the south.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I'm thinking of the Lexus Building on Arlington Street, where they do it very successfully on the north side.
Yeah. We looked at that, actually.
And that's, that's very nice. But from the south, especially now when the leaves are down, there's still something left on the building facade that you can see now, and when I'm looking in Philopello looking at that site, it'd be great to see some, some green wall.
We can, we can do that for sure.
That'd be really nice. And then, this is probably not for you, so much as for staff, but is there any, any discussion about the programming of the community space? Because we've seen a lot of empty spaces along Arsenal Street and, and other locations like that, and, you know, it'd be nice to know that that's not going to happen here.
Right. It's, it's been a discussion between us and them, because we feel that it would have to be something that would be compatible with their space. To a certain degree, we talked about something that would have a, a benefit to the adjacent park space, but they're certainly not a specific user. When we first were meeting with them, and I think we were talking about different types of bigger spaces potentially for that area, we had looked at, or suggested ideas like a community kitchen or things like that, but that's not the path. And so it's, it's going to be a, you know, they're, they're going to fit it out, it'll be to a certain degree, but it's going to be a blank space, and we'll have to figure out if there's a, an appropriate use for it as a community.
I mean, like, would it be consideration to coordinate with the art center so that there was always a show, you know, it's a good gallery.
And that's, and that's one thing that we were talking about was potentially, you know, could it be a, an artist's space that was, in a pop-up that had, you know, displays there on a regular basis, or?
Yeah, I think so too. Okay, so signage, green wall, space, that's it for me.
Thank you.
I feel fairly favorable towards the project as well, despite what you might have thought earlier when I was asking questions, but part of it's asking questions and then thinking about what, what the result of that is. I do have some questions though, some more. Just on a housekeeping level, on the dimensional sheet, you have two non-applicables relative to the rear yard setback. Would you just explain that to me? I noodled over that for five minutes and couldn't figure it out.
I can speak to that well. In the business zone, you can have two front yards, so as long as they're facing streets. And on this, you face two streets, and the other two sides, which would be the south side and the east side, are considered side yards. To give you an example, if one was a rear yard, it would be 30 feet, but because they're side yards, they're 50 feet. So those larger side yard setbacks are placed into the project.
I get it, thanks. Sorry. Another question, just kind of hypothetical, following a little bit on, on what Payson was talking about. Does the project work at an FAR of one and a half, or one and a quarter, or 1.4, or something like that? Where do you draw the line? You drew it at 1.9 so far, but.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, and, and, you know, maybe we're, you know, we should have built, you know, the site's just a challenge, and, and construction costs today are, are out of sight. And, and, you know, if you asked me that question four years ago, I would have said we have some room, but we're, we're petrified right now. We have, by the way, an integrated construction affiliate, so we, we, we build this stuff our own. So, so if anybody can build it cost-effectively, we can. And, and we are razor-thin. And, and in part, too, I would submit, that, you know, the materials we're choosing are expensive, the, the, the site being down into the ground is expensive, you know, very, very expensive. You know, we, you know, we offer it up, you know, in perpetuity at no cost, including build-out of a space, pocket parks, you know, plazas. So it's just a very expensive, you know, project. And, and, you know, when, when, when we hear about density, you know, and we, we had some discussion among the community as well, now it's like, okay, you know, everybody wants less to some extent until you drill down, and you say, well, why do you want less? Is it too big? Is it, is it, is it other shadows casting, you know, around? And, and we had some of these discussions, you know? And when we look at the root of, of why this, you know, project is the size that it is, is because we strongly believe, and again, biased as it may sound, okay, is that it's appropriate, you know? And, and it's just infeasible without it. And as we drill down, and again, not, we, we were unable, and I'll admit, we were unable to get 100% satisfaction, but we have neighbors, most affected abutting neighbors on Coolidge Hill. We're not talking about, you know, five blocks away, okay? And so, so when we have these conversations and we balance all of the, the benefits against some of the, the, the impacts, we, we think we have a project that people are in full support of. And so a long-winded way to answer your question, but I wanted you to, you know, understand that, that, you know, I don't like going into projects without a lot of flexibility on stuff like this unless, you know, unless it's truly warranted. And I just, I, I just stand here convinced that the density here is, is, you know, again, if we're looking for 100% satisfaction, then we fail. But, but we also fail on some of the, the benefits that we're proposing then, you know, those would be lost as well.
So, so I think I, I mean, I, I buy into generally what you're saying, and I sense from the way you're saying it, that what you're saying is the case, that it's, there's not a lot of flexibility in terms of the pro forma, or however you're financing the project and so forth. So given that, given that this is the volume that needs to be built in order to derive the revenue that makes it all worthwhile, what can you do to address some of the questions that have come up, particularly from Gamble's team, about the 250-foot sort of guideline, let's say, aspirational guideline, regulatory guideline, whatever you want to call it? Could you move the stair, for instance? Is that up at the uphill end on Coolidge Hill Road? Could you move that a quarter of the way down the building and reveal it with glass, which breaks up? So I'm not suggesting things, I'm asking questions to see what you might have already thought of, that would break up the perceived volume of that from the community across the way, without cutting into your, into your project's goals at all. That's just moving A to B, maybe changing a wall to some glass, but that's not much.
And let me just make sure I understand, so, because I, I, you, so we talked about, so the issue that you're framing is that the, the length of the wall is, is, is uninterrupted. And so there, there's, you know, so good planning, if you will, we should try and break that up, is what the, is what the comment is.
I'm not, I'm not saying it's good planning or bad planning, I'm just saying it would break down the scale of the building into something that is a little bit closer to the scale of the neighborhood, and not change the quality or the, sort of the general feel of the building volume very much. You're not doing any of these necessarily, because you probably don't have enough in that stanchion, that, the standoffs, to make a difference really visually.
Right.
But putting a transparent element partway down the building, not halfway, not a tenth of a way, but somewhere in an artful location, it does break it up without, without losing the, the continuity of the idea, if that's important.
We did have, didn't we have transl- again, sorry.
Let me, let me sort of try to address this. This is, this is the challenge. Mr. Shaw, you're, you're bringing it up, and we had, we had lengthy discussions, actually, with Gamble Associates on this too, because we don't want to be fake. Faking it, people will pick it out right away, and then the building becomes, it, it becomes ugly immediately.
It doesn't become fake because it becomes more contextual.
Yeah, I, I understand, I understand that. And our, our challenge was, when we talked about stairways, our transparent stairways in a storage facility don't have any lights in them, because all the lights are off. So during the day, it's, it's not a, it's not a beautiful transparent wall, it's actually a gray shadow space. And these are the challenges that we looked at.
Yeah, but let me.
Our building, our building is so managed that the lights are off in the stairwell.
But let me, let me, let me just go, because, I mean, listen, I think if the question is, can we come up with some design ideas about breaking up the Coolidge Hill elevation, I think we should, we should go back and revisit that.
Or addressing the scale. I don't, I mean, I, I'm not trying to be too prescriptive, that's not our role here, but I, I think that it, it could have some benefit if you explored it and found, found the right, right sort of spot, the sweet spot where it made a difference. It's, it's not a cost issue on the budget bottom line, really, to be, I mean, it's not a lot you'd notice, but it could make a difference on, on the.
I think what Eric was allude to is that we attempted that with these light translucent panels, which, to Eric's point, didn't really work, because they weren't lit. But you know what? That doesn't mean that's the only option, right? And so, so.
We looked at a variety of options, and I think, you know, we're trying to get away from the standard approach to the exterior of this type of building, which you see at a public storage. They break it up by opening up corners and creating false corners. And in a way, it's fake. And we, we said, well, let's be honest, this building is a, it's a building that stores people's things. It doesn't, you don't want to shed light on it, it doesn't need light, so why don't we play with the material and the pattern of the building instead? And I think, I, I agree with Paul. If, I, we need to step back and look at it again, perhaps in a way of changing scale or pattern, maybe changing materiality again, we can start to create that sense without creating something that, I think we all, we, we all look at these, the first generation of public storage buildings, and we go, all right, even the garage doors are false. There's no activity in that, in that window, but they did it for that, for this reason of breaking up the facade. And we're, we're trying to avoid that.
And we also, and we also tried to, you know, address this issue, and we did, this came up in the Gamble design, is that the, the, the layers of the patterns, they, they proud of each other, and then unfortunately, this is horizontal, but, you know, and so I, I think between that and the green wall, we, we, we thought that those were the, the elements that could, you know, address this contextual. But let us, let us, you know, you know, we've got a bunch of iterations here of stuff, and, and, you know, listen, at the end of the day, we really want, and hopefully, we're in the right, as they say, the right, you know, the right, you know, maybe we're, we're in the right church and the pew isn't right, you know what I mean? But I think hopefully we're in the right place in, in the design theme, where, make a few tweaks here, we, we could get close, because we, we want this to be a beautiful building.
And you could potentially soften that facade and the relentlessness of it with the green wall. If it were irregular, instead of these little, these little vertical slashes.
Right, right.
Then it almost becomes camouflage, but I'm just so suspect of green walls succeeding. We've seen some fail in this town as well.
Mm-hmm.
So I hate to rely on it. So architectural elements are a comfort factor to me, because they're there.
Right.
And light can be used to reinforce them, they don't have to be dark stairwells. Anyway, I just think that you ought to, you ought to take David's team's concern about that wall and its length seriously, and think how you can do it in a clever way that doesn't break the bank and makes a difference to those who look at it all day long.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess that's, I guess that's all I want to bring up right now.
Thank you.
Payson, you're on, if you want.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have much to add that hasn't already been said by, you know, by Payson and then Janet and Gary. There's a lot of things I like about this project, to be honest. I like the landscaping, I like the pocket park, I like a lot of the materials, I just, I don't like the Coolidge Hill facade, and I just think relentless was a really good word to describe it. And I also, you know, you know, renderings can be like a, a really helpful tool, but, but also they can sort of draw attention to the, you know, downside of something. When I look at this one, and it's, it's, it looks so ominous, because it's in shadow, and it will be in shadow a good part of the day. So like, you know, you see, I, I really like this part of it, you know, the, the Arlington Street facade and the interplay of materials, the glass, the wood, and then you come around Street facade and the interplay of materials, the glass, the wood, and then you come around the corner and just, again, this relentless facade, that I, I get, you know, that the green wall's trying to break it up a little bit, but, you know, the design guidelines, I mean, that's one of the conditions here, is that, you know, 250 feet, up to 250 feet by special permit, so somebody recognized along the way that that's something we don't want to encourage, is such a long run of uninterrupted facade, and yet that's, that's what this is. So, that's it. I mean, that's just kind of synthesizing, I think, what you've heard from everybody else, but that, that's how I feel about it, and I, I just don't think it's quite there yet either. I wouldn't be ready to support it in its current iteration.
Thank you.
But I'd also, I would like to hear from, from the public too, including abutters.
In just a minute. I've got some short answer questions, I think.
Sure.
One is, Eric's the architect, and this is a landscape architecture firm?
Crow, Crow Engineers.
John G. Crow Associates.
Is a landscape architecture, you're the architect within the landscape, okay. These units are all different sizes, I see. Is that, God knows how you figure that out, that's kind of arbitrary, isn't it?
It's, it's not, it's not entirely arbitrary. We, we sort of go into the demand-
But they are different sizes.
Yeah, five by 10, 10 by 10.
And if I rented one of those units, it's got two walls, a concrete floor and a concrete ceiling, and some lights, probably.
Correct.
Maybe not some lights.
Yeah, no lights.
The front wall is solid, it's all solid walls.
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's got a front door.
So I would take exception to one of the things you said about a lot of finishes, there are very few finishes, actually, in a building like this. I mean, it's all finished, but there's no fancy painting, there's not a lot of fancy woodwork, it's a simple construction.
Correct.
Speaking of construction, I take it this is steel and concrete, or?
Yes.
It's all steel and concrete, all the way up.
Correct.
Yeah. You're, we don't need to go into it tonight, but these little diagrams about the access by trucks, of course, you shrunk them down. It looks like trucks ran into each other, but it's not what happened. So, if we see you again, I think it'd be interesting if that was blown up a little bit, you can actually follow it. You know, for those of us who've dealt with parking garages, and you know these turns and stuff, it's interesting to see those diagrams and really understand them. But I see you've done that with two different sized trucks, which-
We're limiting the truck sizes.
Yeah, okay. There is an attendant here during the working hours, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
There's at least one, and, you know, lots of times two.
I would suggest, again, if we see you again, to have a really good section of the rain screen and how that really works, you know? I mean, one of the interesting things about the Cambridge Public Library that Bill Rond did is that front wall and the double glazing and all that. It'd be interesting to really understand that here, because this is, this is an interesting concept. A lot of people have never seen a, a rain screen, you know, how, how far is it set back, so forth, so forth. And I guess that was about it, I think that's enough. Anyway, so I think we're ready for some-
What is the standoff? How much is that?
We're, we're, right now, we're looking at holding it off three inches.
Oh, okay. I expected, no, anyway, so, otherwise, that's-
Noticeably.
The storage space you're talking about. So I think we're open to any, we, we have all seen a, a number of signatures in, in support of this project. There were some, it looked like a husband and wife, but both the signatures were the same, which was a little surprising, but anyway, that happens.
Yeah.
Politics too, I'm sure.
Just a reminder, if you want to speak, just come up to the mic, you don't have to raise your hand.
Whoever's trying to say something, please jump to the microphone. All right, well, moving right along. Oh, you are, okay. A woman's had her hat on the entire time.
Sorry, I know, I'm cold, I walk home from work. So, my husband and I live directly across 1416 Coolidge Hill Road, so we are directly affected by this, and so, honestly, we thought the alternative was either a high-rise apartment building, which we had read about, or this. And so, we sort of thought the lesser of two evils, and so, you know, this was obviously to us better than a, a high-rise apartment building across the street. But if there's some way that this building could not be, you know, as high, as some of you pointed out, and we really appreciate that, that would be terrific. So, I can't think of anything else I would like to say, other than the fact that we sort of thought it was somewhat of a done deal, but if there was some way that it wouldn't be, you know, we are literally right across the street, then that would be terrific for us. Is there anything, honey, that you would like to add? No? Okay.
Can you say your name and address?
My name, for the record. Marie and Brandon LaTellier, L-A-T-E-L-L-I-E-R, 1416 Coolidge Hill Road. Thank you.
Hello, there. I'm Erin Colby, I live at 36 Coolidge Hill Road, and I'm the mysterious dot that was-
You're the, you're the missing dot?
I'm the missing dot, exactly. But actually, generally speaking, I'm a biomedical engineer, I'm an entrepreneur, I have several startup companies, I like the idea of developing the area, I like the idea of the self-storage, all of that is great. As with what everybody else has been saying, I think the five stories is too much, it is an imposing edifice. It would be great if we could take off the top story. A question, I don't know if it's for this board, or zoning, or somebody else, could the footprint be allowed to increase, so that if there is some given amount of volume that needs to be used inside for storage, in order to make it a proper business case, that we could allow them to increase the square footage a little bit, and resultingly take down the, the height from five to four stories? That would be my suggestion.
Would you like me to speak to that briefly?
Sure.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Yeah. In order to do that, they would have to ask, request a variance as well, because there's a requirement for it to be set back from the park, and from the, the residential zone to the east.
Yep.
That many feet. So it, the building is exactly where it is allowed to be, without asking for a variance from the rules of the ordinance, which-
So then my suggestion would be that if there were members of the town who supported, particularly the local community who supported a variance, we could let the zoning board know that that would be helpful for our particular case. That certainly would be a good idea.
So while we're on this, is that only because at grade level? What if at the upper floors?
It is a, it is a solid line, no matter what, in both directions, and there's no flexibility, so the only way to be, be flexible would be to request a variance, and meet the four criteria for meeting that variance. They've shown that they can build it within this footprint, so, you know, there, there could be the rationale that there's more of an impact, but I, you know, I look, look to the attorney and, and to the town to, you know, decide if that's, it's, it's not what they, that was not what they requested, because the variance is a much higher bar to request. It's, it's, you know, there's state requirements, and there's four criteria, and they are very specific, and you have to meet them all. Exactly, exactly, so.
I understood. It just seems like another option, that's all.
And also, the increasing of square footage would be at the expense of landscaping and parking, so that's a consideration. Exactly. So landscaping, yeah.
Or, or in theory, even if you had it overhang the parking, it, right now, you can't do that, because the ordinance does not allow you to be closer than that for a building to the park, but if, if you, let's say, pushed it towards the park 10 feet, but only on the second, third, fourth, then you, it, it wouldn't actually impact any of the open space, it would only be the impervious area of the site, but-
Which might be a good way to-
Because the code is written the way it is.
Thank you for that. So one question then for the team. Let's say this site was smaller, and you were able to build 300. Does that project not work? It's what, the question is, how do you decide the difference between the site and the number of units you need?
So there's, I should have mentioned earlier when-
It's strictly of the max. I mean, we've, we've heard this about housing too, and everybody says, oh, we, we have to lose 20 units, we're, we go broke, well, you know, we're just not sure about that.
Right.
So the question is, what is the relationship between, what makes it viable and where does it stop being viable?
Right. And, and Mr. Shaw had raised, I, I should have mentioned one more point on that, which is, you know, and I guess the best, you know, way to describe it, less so housing, more so, say, hotels, right? So hotels need a certain number, and we've developed those as well, need a certain number of units to, to, because it's got some fixed costs. Well, storage has got the same thing, even though the fixed costs are lower, okay? And so, we're sort of at the cusp, like, you, you see these self-storage facilities? You know, I'd say the cutoff might be 60,000 square feet, okay? And we're, we're at, you know, we're at 53, you know? And so, so net, okay? At the end of the day, 73 is total, but we're only selling 53,000 square feet, 53,000 worth of square feet. So it's that and, and the cost of construction is real.
The other part of the question then is, how long will it take you to fill, let's say it's finished today, how long will it take you to fill it up?
Um, you know-
Is there that, how do you know about the demand, I guess is the question? Erasians have some things they want to give you, and we do too, but, but-
So, so just like, so just like, you know, you know, each use has got its own special metrics, right? And so, so the, the quick answer to your, to your question is, we think we can lease this up in, you know, less than 18 months, fully. And, and the one thing about self-storage is that it usually takes a long time to lease up. So, but the metric here is that nationally, and, and, you know, you know, take this with a little grain of salt, right, is the, the, a, a, you know, properly satisfied market for self-storage is six to seven square feet per capita, okay? And so, so take 100,000 people in your, in, in your trade area, and by the way, it's a, it's generally a, a three-mile business, okay? So if there's 100,000 people in the three-mile radius, times six, you should have 600,000 square feet of, of storage. And that would be a comfortable, you know, sort of market. Here, in Watertown, that number's less than two and a half, in that trade area. So, I, I want to say, don't hold me to this exactly, but I want to say maybe 300,000 in a three-mile radius, okay, times three, would be 900,000 square feet of, of self-storage, and it's nowhere near that.
Well, we have a great recycling program, that takes care of part of it. Do you have something you wanted to say, John?
Yeah.
You've been sitting here with this document you want to read.
I came here tonight in the hope that you'd be voting yes on this thing, so I'm a little bit disappointed. But, you know, there was concern upfront when we heard that this building was going to go for sale, and that it was a large footprint, and it was sitting on a five-legged intersection there. So we weren't sure exactly what was going to happen there. So, I'm happy with, with their plan, and I've been with it all the way. I mean, I've sat down with Paul many, many times, and I think he's in earnest, and I think that, I don't know all of the technical stuff that you speak of, but, but I mean, I'm satisfied with it. I think the neighborhood is satisfied with it. I think it's a good use for, use for the building, and, and that's basically it. We were looking for a passive use for that building, and we have it. I mean, right now, in Coolidge Hill Road, on Grove Street, they start at Coolidge Avenue, and they come all the way to the Tufts Garage, and you, and you can't get out of Coolidge Hill Road there. The other end, on Arlington Street, you have a lot of capacity that hasn't been realized yet, with the Lynx Building, with the Arsenal Yards, with all of those things that are going on there. So I think that's going to put more pressure there. So, we're getting boxed in a little bit there, so I was really pleased with the, with what we had there. We, you know, we wanted that public storage, and we went around a little bit, but that's where we ended up. And I think it's, it's a good use for the hill.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, the neighborhood spoke on this, so, that's it. Thank you.
Can I, can I just make a, a quick comment about? I, I think that, I think we're all sort of in agreement that the, it's a good use for the site, in terms of parking, and traffic, and low impact and all that. I, I think what a lot of us here are saying is that, like, let's, let's assume that as a given, and just work on the building itself.
Yep.
I think part of the problem is that you made the building interesting, so now people want to make it more interesting, and a little, make props a little more fitting in, I don't know.
Well, there's only, I think that that's what makes, you know, makes it special. Sometimes, you know, I just have white hair, and I don't any longer, but it's just-
It's your fault, you did it too well.
And, and at the end of the day, you usually end up looking for something. So, we're, we're happy to continue with the debate.
Did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, um, Paul, what was it? What was your statement earlier on?
Come to the microphone.
If they come to the mic.
Yeah.
Lighting? Lighting on, on the roof of the building?
No.
There's no lighting?
No.
Oh, okay.
Solo, solo panels.
Oh, solo panels, yeah, that's what I thought you said, okay.
They don't reflect.
And by the way, Brandon, and we met with Brandon, but, you know, we've got a whole process to go here, in terms of lighting, and what happens, and all that sort of stuff. It's sensitive to anything else, like, about the lighting, why are we, most of the issues around the city, so, you know, certainly, certainly, it could be more-
I know, but- I know.
Angie Cornelis, 55 Keenan Street, District A, East End Town Councilor. Thank you so much, once again, for the opportunity. I certainly respect Mr. Erasian, and many others who have said that they've worked very closely with the developer, and this would certainly be an ideal use for the site. It certainly does have less impact than other proposals. But one of the abutters did also mention that it was one project or the other, and I'm quite dismayed to even have to bring this forward, and many of you know how many years I've been active in the community prior to even being a town councilor. And never in my days have I seen two proposals brought forward for the same development, for the same parcel. For the upcoming ZBA meeting on the 22nd, there are two proposals, the self-storage proposal, and the 40B housing proposal. It's totally unheard of in Watertown. I can tell you that 40B affordable housing project is now no longer an insurance policy. Many of you know that we have been advised by Mass Housing that Watertown does meet the 1.5 land area criteria, so Watertown cannot be forced to accept a 40B affordable housing development. Certainly, we all support affordable housing, but we shouldn't be forced into it. So, that being said, I'm, I do get very emotional, because many of us spent many hours going over the material to be submitted to Mass Housing, because of this developer. In the application package, under operations and maintenance plan, pavement cleaning twice a year, I'm a little bit disappointed. This particular development was contrived. If the planning, if, I'm sorry, if the zoning ordinance had not been changed to require less parking, we wouldn't be discussing self-storage for this location. The developer of the Elm Street self-storage brought forward a request to reduce the number of required parking spaces. This particular petitioner signed up, sent the town council and everyone else, excuse me, a letter of support. The petitioner purchased the property after the zoning amendment was approved. So, all contrived, going right along. It's sad that this happens in our community.
Sorry, what was that last sentence? What?
I'm sad that this happens in our community. The developers are actually dictating what happens in bringing forward zoning amendments. I think we, as a community, need to wise up, and see what's happening in our community, that we are supporting. Is self-storage the best use for this parcel? How many of us want to purchase a property and reside in it, abutting self-storage? A five-story Hulk that's windowless on Coolidge Avenue, Coolidge Hill Road? Yes, there was a cement plant on Grove Street? Yes, this site was E.H. Heinz, a rigging company? But we're doing better. The residential properties in the area are selling for millions of dollars. What is this going to do to the real estate values in the area? I can tell you, I don't want to live next door to it. And my constituents do. They've purchased properties here. We, as a community, need to step up and do what's right. Are the developers dictating? Self-storage is a multi-billion dollar industry, and this petitioner paid for two proposals. That's a lot of money, just for the insurance that if, in fact, this did not go through, hey, I'm giving you a 40B affordable housing- a 40B affordable housing for a hundred thirteen units. Would those same people who signed those petitions, knowing that the hundred thirteen units is not possible, would they sign it at this point in time, supporting self-storage? I wouldn't. But the abutter just mentioned a few minutes ago, well, it might have been either or. Yes, that was the possibility. That was in the, in, in the back of their minds when they were signing. Were they coerced? I don't know. I wasn't there. I didn't sign it. I was not invited to the first meeting. The Greeks have a proverb, "Better to fear me than to have pity for me." So there are other issues here. I certainly would not support five stories. The, uh, a butter who actually submitted the document indicated three stories. If it must be, certainly not five stories. We don't know the timeframe. When is this facility going to be open? What are the hours? What about snow removal? Not listed. Not listed in the conditioning.
It's, it's on the site plan. There's, they show snow, a snow area on the site plan.
Okay.
Sorry.
Um, community room. What are the hours of the community room? If the community room is only going to be available while the building is open, then that might not be feasible. We need the community room in the evening? Well, are we going to be told, "Building's closed"? So, decision is yours, not mine. I would not support it. Thank you.
Gideon, did we miss something? Was some, was there a housing proposal? There's no housing proposal that we know about.
There is a, there's a separate project that was applied for through 40B that was before the zoning board for the same site, so it didn't, it didn't come to you.
Why not?
It's a, it's a, it's a 40B project, so the direct, they, they apply for, and it goes directly to the zoning board of appeals at the local level, and so it's, it's a...
We don't know that. That's, we're, at first, I don't think any of us knew that, did we? That's unfortunate.
So, so, um, you know, there's always two sides of a story, you know? And so, you know, and, you know, and we've tried to explain this in others here, and, you know, if there's one thing, we don't know each other, but, you know, we don't deceive people, we have high integrity, and when people start questioning how we go about our process, almost like we're being duping people, it's deeply upsetting. And so, the short story, if I can condense it, is that we presented a self-storage plan at the time that the town was in the middle of AD Elm, and there was real debate over whether there was going to be an abandonment of the use. And so here we come, okay, with another project, and we're, you know, we're, we're not feeling terrific about whether this use is going to be accepted. So, we pivoted. And that was in, um, really the summer of eighteen, okay? So, late summer of eighteen. We make a decision that we're not going to be successful with self-storage use, because parking, because the uses, there was a, I think there was a, um, a, a, a vote to, to abandoning it, you know, to eliminate it. And so, we move forward with Plan B. And Plan B, at that time, was housing. And we spent, um, the better part of the whole summer of eighteen and into early nineteen preparing a 40B application, at no insignificant cost, because we felt like a self-storage plan wasn't feasible, or, or, I shouldn't say feasible, it wasn't going to be accepted. So, so we came forward with that in, um, you know, I want to say March, April timeframe, okay? And we submitted a 40B application. And so, and so, once we submitted that, you know, AD Elm was approved by that point, and, and, and we had some new team members join us, and, and we re-engaged a dialogue on the self-storage. And that is the honest truth. And, and at these community meetings, and I encourage you to ask some other folks here, okay? We had never, not once, said that or the other. And, 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 you know, we met with the tears, and I, I'm, I'm upset a little bit at that statement, because, and I think she would, you confirm this, we never said at that meeting, "It's this or that." We talked only about shadows. Okay? And, and so, now, I could understand how that could be, you know, her comment about it had been out there, there were, there's plenty of reporting about this 40B housing, so I, I could easily understand how somebody could have interpreted that way, but we, that never came out of my mouth, ever. "Please endorse this, or we're going housing." Never, ever, by me or my team. Okay? And, and, and I think Mr. Schreiber would, would also support. We had never even talked about housing. We had spent a good, you know, I would say, what? It was, it was close to a year talking about self-storage only, 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 only. Never once said, "Hey, you know, would you support this, or support that, or we're going to go house?" Never. In fact, they were surprised when we came back in February with a housing plan. They were like, "What happened?". And we said, "Well, geez, we didn't understand." And then, we re-engaged. And so, so that's the truth of the matter. We have never duped anybody on this, and we've always committed that, you know, that the self-storage plan was always the right plan. And as Mr. Erasian pointed out, the, you know, the area is under siege to some extent with development, and, and good development. Arsenal Yard's going to be terrific, Lynx, I think, is great, but this area does not need more traffic. And, and we're use-agnostic developers. We do housing, primarily, we do hotels, we do land development, and we do self-storage. So we look for sites that, that we think are, are well-suited for this. And we have a very similar site in Needham, Massachusetts, that's debating the same issues. All sorts of traffic, quiet use in the middle, lots of design questions, can we make this thing, you know, look right? And so, so I think, you know, we firmly believe that the self-storage is used. We think, again, that the community is in, in, in large support for this, and, and we just, I think it was important that we clarify this housing issue, because it, 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 it never, you know, was portrayed that way.
Can I just, can I just ask one question?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jason, I got a question.
Are you, at the next ZBA meeting, is there a housing proposal that is simultaneous with this self-storage proposal?
So, so what happened, the short answer to that is yes, okay? But here's the, the longer version. We, when we filed for our, uh, plan, okay, we had got re-engaged on the, on the self-storage. And so we said, "Let's just run forward with, with both." We didn't withdraw the plan, okay? And so, the timing just happened to work. We were actually supposed to be on the, the docket for December, and then, you know, there was a, you know, other projects, and we got, we got bumped. So we had pushed, the date of 1/22 was set four months ago, or three months ago, whatever it was.
Well, what's 1/22?
1/22 is the ZBA hearing.
January twenty-second.
January twenty-second.
January.
Okay. So, so that date had been set four months ago. So, yes, it's listed there, but in the intervening time, the state came back and ruled that there's a safe harbor, and that there's, there's no availability. So, so, yes, it's on there, but it's, you know, it's, it's, it's not being heard.
Are you still, are you withdrawing it, or are you going to present both?
No, we're withdrawing it.
Oh. Okay. That, that's what I wanted to know.
Okay.
My question was related. You talked about the uncertainty of the rules about self-storage back in 2018. And I'm not familiar with the intricacies of the 40B process, but after that certainty had been given, which was later in 2018, if I recall correctly, when AD Elm Street was approved, could you have withdrawn the 40B application, or was it, was the train rolling down the tracks and you can't stop it at that point? Could you have withdrawn it? Is my question. So, I just don't, I'm just asking the question.
Well, well, again, back to the timeline, sure, we could have withdrew, withdrew it at any point, but the timing's different, right? So in other words, we had, it wasn't clear that this self-storage issue was going to be cleared up in the time that we were going through this process. So we left the planning after, I don't know, maybe three or four meetings in eighteen, and said to ourselves, "Okay, doesn't look like we're going to have a storage plan, let's go develop, um, housing." There was no discussion with the town at all between, I'll say, you know, late summer in eighteen, September of eighteen, till February of oh nine, nineteen, when we showed up with a housing plan. So there wasn't a withdrawal action on the table, because we had left, because we thought that the, 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 the storage plan was sort of, we, we basically...
You walked away from the self-storage, you walked away from what? I'm just trying to figure out what...
We, we walked away from the planning department not feeling like we, we had a plan that was going to work, between all the uncertainty around, for self-storage.
Even though AD Elm Street had been approved at that point? I forget exactly when it was approved.
Well, I, I don't know exactly when it was approved, but, but, from, from the time that we talked about our plan, to the time that it got approved, we, you know, we left, you know, the planning department and started working on our housing plan, and didn't come back until, you know, the first quarter of nineteen.
But you are, you're going to walk into the ZBA on the twenty-second and say, "We're withdrawing this application"?
Yes.
I'm correct, okay.
Thank you. Just to follow up, um, when the planning office submitted the material to Mass Housing for the, indicating that we were asserting safe harbor, and, uh, and then it came back, the petitioner appealed it. So within the last sixty days, the petitioner appealed the submission of the planning office to Mass Housing that we were asserting safe harbor.
I guess I don't know what that means.
So, I'll explain it again. Within the last sixty days, the petitioner appealed the assertion of the planning office that Mass, that, that Watertown met safe harbor. So if the petitioner really didn't care, why were they appealing the assertion of the city known as the town of Watertown? And Mass Housing subsequently came back and said that, yes, Watertown does meet the requirements of safe harbor. Now, the petition before the ZBA on the twenty-second, whether the petitioner withdraws it or not, the ZBA does not have to accept it, because Watertown meets safe harbor, which means we meet the criteria of the 1.5 percent. We exceed the 1.5 percent. So, it's moot at this point. I don't know what the ZBA is going to do, but the ZBA, or the town of Watertown cannot be forced to accept 40B. The end.
Not quite, but, so, just, you know, again, just, you know, I'm trying to be an honest broker here of the information, and not taint it, or, or cast it in the light. So, procedurally, okay, you know, once the train had left, as you point out, okay, we had made our filing. And, and listen, you know, it's not, this isn't, I think the issue here is, are we leveraging, are we saying to folks, "Accept this or that"? Well, which is not the case. What we did was, we said, "Well, listen, if a self-storage plan is not acceptable", okay? We thought that a housing plan would be great, and we still believe a housing plan could be great there, okay? And so, now that option has been pulled from us, okay? And as the counselor has raised, okay, when the town came forward and presented their safe harbor, and again, you know, we, we hire attorneys, and they counsel us, and we, we talk it through, we, we didn't feel like the information that was presented to the state was sufficient. So we challenged it, okay? And that challenge came back in favor of the town. And so, and that happened in the last sixty days. So, so that's what's, what's occurred.
We'll, we'll be sure to, we'll be sure to submit you the determination from the state.
What'd you say?
We'll, we'll submit the determination from the state for the board. It's been on our list to do.
Last voice here.
As a final comment, if I may, the, the district is an I-two. Housing is not allowable, an I-two. It's only through 40B, that 40B allows the bypass of some of the zoning requirements within the community. So housing is not allowable. It's only by the means of 40B. So, read between the lines, please.
Hey, Sean, we got one thing, too. Mr. York, it, it was not involved in any of those dealings.
We, we, we had the luxury of paying to attorneys during that process, so, to make light of the situation, but, thank you.
Well, it seems to me there's some general agreement about this use on this site. I think there are still some issues to be solved in terms of what it looks like and so forth. And so, I would suggest that a return visit makes sense.
I guess the one question I'd ask the board is, um, you know, and I think I heard some of it, but I, I guess I'd just like to make sure I, I get some specifics about, making sure we document it properly. Coming back with breaking up the facade of Coolidge Hill was one thing. Fixing some of the, the inconsistencies and making sure that that's addressed properly in the plan submission.
And then looking at the, the total height, is there a way to step back and, and reduce kind of the map, the overall mass of that?
And again, I, I like to lead with the bad news, you know? I mean, I, I just don't feel, I don't want anybody to be, have expectations, you know? We can't, you know, we can't reduce the building. And so, um, uh, we can do lots of other things, and, 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 and make it look, you know, all sorts of different, and, and again, I don't want to be viewed as stubborn or inflexible, but again, we keep coming back to, you know, again, I, I don't think this height is, is inappropriate. And, and again, if we have to satisfy 100% of the community, then, then we fail. And, and, and I think a lot of projects in town would fail. And so, so, we'll, we'll look at it, but I, I just don't see how, um, you know, that is, you know, going to be possible.
Well, I think five people on the board, though, are telling you that it's too tall. So, that's a pretty high percentage of the board. Just, just empirically, that's what's going on here.
Well, when you say it's too tall, it's, it's got to be about height, it's got to be about shadows, correct?
A, a large part of it, yeah.
Yeah. So...
I'm not saying that, by the way.
I'm not either.
Yeah, I didn't hear that either, you know? And, and Mr. Brown, Chair, I, I didn't hear as well.
Well, yeah, I think it's maybe a combination of the height, I, I mean, I'm, I'm with Payson about the, even if there was a way to step back the top floor, take some square footage out of it, even if not the entirety of the, of that floor.
But again, what are we trying to, I mean, again, and we've had these conversations, and again, I don't want to be, certainly appear argumentative, right? But, you know, you know, a twist here, a turn there, and all of a sudden, you're not really accomplishing what you, you intended to accomplish, you know? And so I, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, why are we doing this? Is it to pull the shadow back, you know, five feet, eight feet? Is it, is it to not create a shadow for three hours or five hours? I mean, that's the empirical reason why you want to do something like that, okay? Putting aside for the moment the, the breaking up of the length of the facade, right? So that's a separate issue, I think, that, that can be addressed without adjusting height. So then it goes to height, and you say, "Okay, well, what is it about height that is offensive"? And, and, you know, I, I think, again, the building's, you know, you know, seventeen feet back from the curb line, um, you know, so, I guess those are the issues, though, it sounds like.
Well, and the screen wall, which is, was pointed out some time ago, I mean, what we're looking at is not what it's going to look like, so I think we just need to, it'd be interesting to understand that all a little bit better.
It's, it's, you know, it's beyond the shadow, it's just that view that we're looking at, you know? Picture yourself as one of those abutters, living on that street, looking out that window, and what they're looking at every day. That's, that's what I think we're getting at. It's like, is there a way we can improve that experience for them?
Okay. Well, listen, we will do our best, and, and I have to say, we were sort of saying, when they look out that window today, that looks really good. And so, so, you know, I think, you know, we're trying to be sensitive to that, but I, I appreciate that comment, and we'll, we'll do our best.
So one, one other thing to think about for the community, I think, as well as us and your design team.
Do you use your microphone?
If you, if you drop the height, then people don't look at a, a wall that looks nice, they start looking at solar panels, and roofing, and stacks, and equipment that's going to be sitting up there. So, the whole picture ought to be kept in mind as well. And I, that's, that's why I tend to favor the, the height, because it does keep a lot of that out of view, and the wall itself has the potential to look very nice. I think even when it goes this way instead of this way, it can still look nice.
I, I agree totally with this. And in fact, looking at the site plan, you do yourself a disservice with this rendering, because there's no place where you're going to be able to see the entirety of the building like that. From across the street, the abutters across the street, you'll see a section of it, and you won't see above your, your second floor window height. As Gary said, if you, if you did, you wouldn't like what you saw. But... But from across the street, you're not gonna be seeing this whole facade. And there's no place coming down Arlington Street or coming up Nichols. There's no street where you're going to see that much of the building.
Right.
At all. If you look at the site plan carefully, you're really gonna see just the corner section of it. So, I really, I mean, I will, I will agree with the continuance. I just want to express that it's really minor stuff that we're talking about. And it could be anything from just the sections, the width of those rainscreen panels, if they were broken up, or if there was a little more color variation, or really small stuff, which, you know, if we could tell the zoning board, I would, I'd be happy to do that. But I think in respect to the comments tonight, we should propose a continuance.
Really simple but expensive thing is just start with bigger trees, you know? The trouble is, projects start with trees that are tiny, and it takes forever. But, you know, it may be worth spending a little more to get ten taller trees, you know? I mean, it makes a huge difference.
Yeah. Oh, I think we had pretty substantial...
He draws them big, but, you know...
They always come in time, though, we actually purposely credit our talent, but it's much larger on the trees, particularly the street trees to enhance the area. And if you draw them at maturity, then you're, it's a claim of dishonesty.
So, have we a motion?
Okay.
Is there any other questions? I think not, right? No, good.
Okay.
You're okay with the continuance? You're saying that you'd like to...
Yes.
Heenan is asking that we request the...
Okay.
Thank you.
Should I say that?
You earned a speech.
He's been dying to talk all night.
So, oh, so they requested?
I know, and we have to vote on it.
I move that we accept their request for continuance on this to next month.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Well, it was lengthy, but it was an interesting discussion, I think.
No, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
I don't mean to misrepresent what you guys are saying. I think it's a little...
What can you do, you know?
Oh, we still have some.
They don't know that.
Are we gonna see you next one?
Let me just throw something out to begin with. You want to do this tonight? It also turns out we have a very light schedule next month. Maybe that's too late, but is this an hour's presentation?
This is not. I promise you, this will take significantly shorter than the presentation. Presentation, which I can probably make it happen even less than ten minutes if you'd like. I do know that you all got copies of this before the meeting, but I have some eleven-by-seventeens. Okay, I have some eleven-by-seventeens here that are ordered a little bit here. Great, thank you. I'm Andrew Shagnon from the Vertex Companies. I am the civil site designer for the three Watertown elementary schools. I'm here this evening because we wanted to come in and give kind of an informal presentation on primarily the site design for the schools, although you see, you will see some renderings and things like that of the building. I have with me Chris Bradner, who's a partner at Traverse Landscape Architects, they are the landscape architects. And I also have Jackie Rice, who works with Chris here. There are a lot of slides.
What's the firm?
My firm is the Vertex Companies.
Yeah, okay.
The architect is AI Three Architects. They actually had a conflict for this meeting tonight. A building committee meeting, actually, and it's, that's why they're not here. This was primarily to really focus upon, really, the site development for the project. And again, it was really just an informational meeting for you guys. The site civil design, I'm the civil engineer for the project. Yep. I'm gonna just look real quickly at the three sites. Again, I'm sure you guys are all familiar with them. The first one is the Hosmer. I guess I should ask, everybody's familiar with the projects? But the Hosmer, there's gonna be a new building at the Hosmer, there's gonna be a new building at the Cuniff, there's gonna be a renovation at the Lowell. I'm actually, so I'm actually on the building committee in the town that I live in for a new elementary school there, but unfortunately, both my kids have already graduated, so I feel your pain. The, and you'll see where the proposed buildings are gonna go, but I wanted to look at existing conditions just for a minute, particularly if you look, and I don't know if you guys can see my cursor moving around here, but the building at the end here, right, we refer to this as the Z building, and I just wanted to bring that up because that is gonna be a swing space during construction. When the new Hosmer building is constructed, it's gonna be constructed over this portion of the building. And this area is gonna actually be used for swing space, not only for the Hosmer, but when we look at the Cuniff, it actually will be used for swing space at the, for the Cuniff. Also, the new Hosmer will be built next to it. From a site circulation point of view, existing conditions, the site will primarily be the same. We're not proposing changes to any of the major roadways around the site. The fields will stay where the fields are, where obviously there's the Brigham House next door that we need to keep access to, and we're not making any modifications to that. Again, so this is really just to take a quick look at the existing conditions. If we go to the next slide, this is what it will look like when the new Hosmer building has been constructed. So, this area right here that you see is the new Hosmer building, right off of Concord. The building that I referred to as the Z building is right in this location. So, just to clarify that point, while this building is being constructed, the students will be in the, the Hosmer students will be in the Z building. Once this building is constructed, the hot, once this new building is constructed, the Hosmer students will move over into that building, and the Cuniff students will actually be in the Z, in the Z building while they do the Cuniff construction. As I said, fields will be reconstructed, they stay in place. You can see these blue areas where there's existing parking that we're redeveloping, or some new parking. I am gonna go back one quick slide. I did mention there's no major changes to the roadways, but if you look at this area right here where the historic building and the new building connect to one another, in the proposed condition, we actually are proposing to go from Winthrop through to Concord Road there. So, that would actually be a drop-off area and right at the front of the school. Some of the legends that we have on here, just to look at it, you know, parent drop-off will continue to happen on the roadways around the school, except we will have that new drop-off area right in front of the school. Bus drop-off currently happens on Concord Road, it will continue to happen there. Pedestrian circulation will be maintained throughout the neighborhoods. The service area right now is in between, in between the Brigham House and the existing building, and it will continue to be there. I don't know if anybody's familiar with that area, but it's kind of a jumble. It's kind of a jumble of up and downs, and we're actually gonna redevelop that entire area. That will be, it still needs to be two levels, but it won't have kind of that intermediate up and down in the middle of it.
How many stories is the school gonna be?
It is, I'm gonna show you some renderings at the end. It's various, it's very, it's varying, well, it's varying different heights. Again, this is primarily a site discussion, but we knew that you would all be interested in seeing the buildings because as long as everybody can access it and park their cars, nobody really cares about the site. Everybody wants to see, everybody wants to see the building. So, we did add some renderings at the end. Looking at the Cuniff, you know, this is a fairly compact site, existing building, sits right up against a roadway, parking next to it. Primarily, we're gonna still have that configuration when we're done. It's just that the building is a little bit longer and configured, no major, again, no major changes to the roadway here. You guys actually have, currently have a project that's ongoing, or that is about to happen, that will put a raised crosswalk in the front of the school, which we'll incorporate into our design and make sure that we maintain that. And we're actually adding a second raised crosswalk at the next, at the next intersection also. So, again, looking here, we have Warren Street in the front. The existing entrance to the site will remain where it is. Parking will remain in the general, in the general area where it is. The building gets taller and longer. It creates this green space in between the building and the parking, and you'll see some renderings of what that looks like. Drop-off continues to happen in front of the building as it does now. There's a drop-off lane there that we actually extend out a little bit to pick up some more of that drop-off lane. Buses will continue to come into the school and drop off. We've developed a turnaround so that they can turn around in the, in the, in the site and then get out. We maintain pedestrian access. Service is around to the rear of the building. The ball field does go away. And again, we, so there is, these guys actually do have some stuff they're gonna talk about here. There are, we have some open spaces and green spaces that will show you some, what they look like on each one of the, on each one of the sites. The Lowell primarily stays the same, except it gets an addition here where this, where this parking lot is shown here, and it gets another addition in the back here. You can see that addition here, addition in the back. Again, everything here from circulation remains the same. Parking is gonna remain the way that it is. The fields are gonna remain the way that, the way that they are, access and pedestrian access. One of the things that I had intended to mention at the beginning, that I forgot to, as we got, as we got rolling here, you know, there was a lot of work that was done on these, on the sites before we got into design. Obviously, there was surveys that were done for the site, there's been geotechnical explorations that were done on all of the sites. There's been traffic studies done for all three of the sites. The geotechnical and traffic were done in two phases where they were done when we're at schematic, and then we did a second phase of them as we started to get into design. There's ongoing work with the town, you know, we've been meeting with the DPW, and we've been submitting drainage calculations to them to get through our permitting with them. There's been a number of meetings with your public safety people, both the fire station and the police station. We're incorporating their comments into it. So, I had intended to start off with those things, but I just wanted to make sure that, make sure that we covered all those things. As I mentioned, we're gonna now run through some of the, just some of the green spaces and parks throughout the sites. If you look at this plan that is in front of you, it's got a bunch of numbered spaces. We have a slide for each one of those numbered spaces. I do not plan to spend a lot of time on those slides because there's something like forty slides here when you, when you go through all them. However, I believe that Jackie, if you want to stand up, I think as I go through them, Jackie might pick one or two out just to make some, some comments on them so you can get there thinking from a landscape point of view. So, looking at the Hosmer first, when that Z building does finally come down, this becomes all green space in that, in that area. We do redevelop a totlot over here and some of the, some of the playfields over here. So, I'll flip through, and again, we'll see these, these are really just to give you a flavor of what we're thinking on the site, and you'll see some of the building stuff in the background.
We just wanted to emphasize with these pictures that we went to the building committee, we talked to some teachers, and we talked to DPW about these playgrounds. So, all of these playgrounds were, the equipment was chosen with a theme within each of the individual schools and then within an age group. So, as we continue flipping through these photos, you're gonna see a lot of different equipment for climbing, and then there's some for the little kids, ADA accessibility. And then you'll see the school in the background where you're asking about height. There's a bridge, I think that's at the second to third story, and maybe four stories total.
That's right, that's right here, correct.
But the playgrounds are far enough so that the views and the impact, scale-wise, should all fit together.
Yeah, I'm going to, I just wanted to point out, so, you know, for example, this has a number two down in the corner. If you looked back at the plan, that is intended to be in this area. So, playground, Hosmer, this is some more play structures. Again, you can see the ball fields in the back, in the back here. Another set, a green area where we come out to the, to the play area. We're gonna have some tiered walls in this area coming down to the, down to the play area there. Some area, again, this is that totlot area that will be fenced in. This is looking at the interior of it. Again, if anything jumps out at anybody and you want to stop me, please stop me.
We also spoke with the garden coordinator, Ruth Fiddy, about all of the school gardens. So, each of the three schools has a school garden with similar components, different varieties of planting beds for different heights, and all accessible, a garden shed. And we really talked with her and the teachers to try to give them what they wanted and what they needed for future classes.
Kind of same type of idea, you have the numbered spaces in it. See the, again, these different play equipment at each one of the schools has been, you know, discussed with the staff at the schools and what the, what the play equipment will be.
Cuniff, they also requested, there's a playground right on that main road that's currently...
It's this area.
Yeah, around two and three, that was public, more public use than school use. So, we did keep that in mind as well, that the neighborhood and locals will be coming to these schools after hours, and we have accommodated for that use as well.
We do have, back towards the loading area here, I did want to just mention, I know we talked about losing the ball field. One second. There's that basketball picture right here. This area will kind of be a combined area where they can get back into the, into the loading, but, you know, during the day, it will actually be, it won't be available for loading, that will be an off-hours thing. It will actually be able to be used by the school during school hours. Again, as Jackie mentioned, the gardens at each one of the schools. the schools. Lowell, same type of idea, a number of different areas where we have numbered, and you can kind of just get an idea. Here's the, you know, view up to the school.
Looks like Arlington National Cemetery or something.
Go back to-
Yep, to the first one.
So this view, we chose specifically because it is an adreno. Lowell is the only adreno of these three schools. So that historic view up the hill was very important. So we worked a lot with the, both the architects and the teachers and to really preserve this view, even though we are adding play equipment right in there in the front, mixing it so that it doesn't stand out too much and doesn't-
It was an important thing to the building committee, that there not be anything that kind of changed that, that view of the build, that view of the building.
Yeah, exactly.
And once again, a themed playground, kind of garden-esque.
Because they don't have buildings, so the bad looks like it goes on forever.
Probably the most complex garden, but there's a little, little seating amphitheater for outdoor classrooms and the same-
Each, each one of the schools contemplates an area for there to be outdoor learning, outdoor learning. This is the, the example at Lowell. And so this is, again, we, we did, although we came to just kind of brief you on the, the site development, circulation and things like that, we did add a couple of renders. So you can see the Hosmer, this is the Hosmer school. This is looking at where I said that new cut-through road or cut-through drive would be with the parking, looking at the, the front of the building. This is the, the bridge that Jackie mentioned. That bridge is back and forth, although it is open underneath. Here's a view back towards the, the school from the fields. You can see the play area that we, that we looked at over here. We have some, you know, rain gardens and things that are being incorporated into the, into the stormwater to make sure that we're meeting your stormwater standards. Conif, this is a view from, there's the playground that Jackie mentioned with the, that is sometimes open to the public right off of Warren, looking at what fronts right on the roadway. If you're familiar with it, there's kind of those formal stairs that go up the front to the school. We maintain, or we're going to put in new, but we maintain kind of that formal stair. Access to the school with, and add some handicap ramps to it so that it's, that it's handicapped accessible. And then this is looking from, again, this would be the, the new entrance which, to the parking, which is in the same location as the-
Impressive.
-existing, as the existing. So I know very quick, very kind of 10,000-foot overview, but we wanted to make sure that, that, you know, the projects have been moving along. We are in construction documents at this point. The two, at least the Hosmer and Conif are planned to be bid in March. So-
What'd you say, they're going to start in March?
They're going to be bid in March.
Oh, bid in-
They're going to be bid in, in March. Yeah, the, the way that they're scheduled out right now, and I can't promise you that this remains exactly the way that is, but it's scheduled for Hosmer to start first, which would be in the spring. They would start that-
This year?
Summer of this year, right? That would be basically a two-year project. Then they flip the kids over. Conif would be a one-year project, '22, '23, school year. And then lastly, would be the Lowell renovations, which would be '23, '24.
Are you involved in the Belmont High School?
I am not involved in the Belmont High School. I'm, I'm involved in a number of school projects throughout the state, but unfortunately, not Belmont.
Anyway, this looks great. It's interesting, I mean, none of this has come in front of us. It doesn't need to, I guess. So it's kind of fun to see it, frankly, but-
Is there a builder on board?
There is not a builder on board as of yet. So the, the project is design bid build. It's not a, it's not a CM at risk project. You do have an OPM, Hill International is the town's-
They're doing hard bids.
Is, they are doing hard bids. Yep. Design, design bid build. Yep.
Where is your stuff?
Sorry, can you just, I know you said, but what's the Hosmer construction schedule?
Starting in the spring, summer of 2020. And it's a two-year, it's a two-year construction period. I forget the, do you know the opening date off the top of your head, Chris? I believe that it's a 2022 opening date for that.
They would actually start construction work, I think, this spring?
Correct, correct. Correct.
How long is it bidding at March?
Well, in March, you're going to take two months to bid. Two months to the version. Two months to the law.
Very, very tight, very tight timeframe with the Mass School Building Authority about when you can go out to bid and what your bid timelines are. It's all very prescribed as a-
They can have a precise timeline, but does it ever get changed?
Yeah. I, I mean, this is probably, this will probably, I, we've worked on dozens of these projects. We have, just as an example, the Natick Middle School and the Durfee High School are in construction right now that we worked on. And so we've done, we've done, we've done a number of projects, both, and I'm sure the OPM and the architect could fill you in on a lot more information on this, but we've done projects both hard bid, design bid build, and construction manager at risk. All have been very, very successful.
How did they make their decision on which way this one was going to go?
So I was not involved in those decisions, but I can tell you, it would have been, again, just based on experience, I can tell you, it would have been a discussion between the owners' project manager, the design team, probably the architect, and the, the building committee. The building committee really would have been-
It's a level of decision.
Correct. Ultimately, any of the decisions that have been here, and I apologize for not explaining this upfront, but you have a building committee. And that building committee is responsible for all the decisions that are made. So any of the decisions that are made on this project, whether it be the, the play equipment or the facade of the building, what, you know, all of that is programmed with the, with the staff, but ultimately, the decisions to go forward are made with the building committee.
Made by what?
Building committee.
The building committee.
Yeah.
Your building, your building, your building committee.
Then there's a single building committee?
There is one building committee for all three of these projects. I'm not sure if they are the same building committee for the high school also. Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't be surprised, yeah.
It's a different OPM, kind of like it's the same?
It is. We are actually, the, it's the same architect, and we're, we're actually working on the design for that, that also. Well, the study for it at this point, there's no design.
We're looking six years down the road until all three of these are finished, something like that?
2024.
So four?
Four years.
Four years.
Yeah. Again, that's if it can, if, you know, there's certainly, they could decide to do two schools at once, they could decide to do three schools at once, but the, the planning that we have right now is for one, two, three.
I don't think, I don't think the plan was to do that because there's not a space, the swing space for, to do more than one school. They have to do the-
Correct. And that's what I'm saying. The, the plan right now, I just, I guess my point is this, I don't want to give you the impression that that's a definitive when I, there's definitely a possibility, that it, it would be open to change. But the, the way that we have phased them out right now is for the, the Hosmer, then the Conif, then the Lowell.
And one other, just a quick question. Does this reflect a lot of growth of student population or not? Or how does it, maybe that's not-
I don't know the-
Something you have to worry about with.
I do not know the answer to that right off the top of my head. It has certainly been, I can tell you again from experience with Mass School Building Authority, it certainly has been part of the, part of your decision-making. There's always a back and forth between the community and Mass School Building Authority about what the right growth rate is. So I do not believe that there's, I don't believe that there's, they're anticipating significant growth.
Based, yeah, based on the data that was determined that we were pretty much flat. The increased population that we've had has supported the schools at a stable line instead of, otherwise, we would have been decreasing in popul, in child age population. So there was a lot of-
Thank you for your time. Certainly, if there's any questions, I know we left you with a whole bunch of information. Please feel free to reach out to the building committee. I'm sure that we can get you any, any answers that you need.
Thank you. I'm sorry I started so late.
Not at, not at all.